Be more than happy to say.
I mean, it's all.
Hey, listen, you know, I'm a part-time preacher, so you can only trust me part of the time.
Okay.
One of these might be fine.
Technology just in your inventory. I understand to get the setting on this and everything. Went to lead the day, no more of that.
Substantial.
If you had five, you were turning three, that's not, we don't even know which ones, because it's so fast now. So.
Who's the new?
You see with a lot of.
Last time done. Darren, how are you?
If you're putting stuff through my head, it's.
Too close to sixty feet.
I may know where that is.
I mean, we're a little bit early, but we would like to take the welcome each and everyone to the February 23rd, 2017 Walton County Zoning Board of Adjustment. If you would, please stand as we have our implications followed by the place of allegiance. Mr. Dixon, would you do the introduction, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you now, and we ask your blessing on our time together. That, Father, that as we set our hands to the task that's in front of us, to lead, to decide, to direct, that you would give us the direction that we need to follow, that there would be an understanding from the folks in the community, that they would learn to live at peace with one another. The best way for us to do that, Father, is to understand that peace flows from you and into our hearts. And so we ask, Father, that you bless our time, bless the men and women who have made the effort to be here, to find solutions in our community, so that we can all live together in peace and harmony. We thank you, Father. This is the hallmark of our country, that we enjoy a nation of freedom where citizens live with one another in peace and harmony. Father, we thank you, that we have the great example of that from your son, Jesus. And it's in his name and in his example that we live, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let the allegiance be the flag of the United States of America, and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We do appreciate all the board members. I think this is the second time in a row that we have a full board, that's, we don't have to explain our four vote rules. So we do appreciate all the board members that are attendance here tonight. We do appreciate our attorney, Mr. Dykes, for being with us, hopefully keeping us straight, and our secretary, Karen, all the hard work, and other members of the staff. We have not. I got to stay with routine, Mr. Dykes. Any announcements?
No, sir. We, as I told you before the meeting started, we do have some pending appeals. All those appeals have been briefed. Now we're waiting on the court to make a determination on those. Due to backlog, it appears it's probably going to be mid to late this year before the judge really starts digging into them. So I'll report back once there's more information.
We appreciate that. We do give each and every person here the opportunity to speak before this board on the issues before us. However, we ask that each person here that is going to stand and speak before the board, if you would, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear that the testimony you give be the truth to the best of your knowledge. If you're going to speak before this board, please stand. Mr. Dykes?
Thank you. Do you all swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We do have four items on our agenda tonight. We have one appeal where you have four variances. Our first appeal is the Walton Apartments' appeal. Mr. Kramer, who's here to represent? David Kramer?
Just briefly, Mr. Laird spoke to me right before we started the meeting. He's expecting an attorney here to represent him by a name of Frank Watson. And he, Watson's en route here, so it's up to you, obviously, but if you want to go ahead or wait, take another item first so his attorney can get here, it's your discretion. But I wanted to at least let you know that he understood you.
Sir, what's your name? What's your name?
I'm William Wyro. I'm an attorney, and I've been retained for the record by David Kramer, representing the appellate, David Kramer, in the Walton Apartments' appeal.
So we have Mr. David Kramer, that would, you, his attorney, Mr. How?
Howlair.
Laird, Mr. Laird is his attorney. So would you mind if we moved to a variance and let Mr. Frank Watson get here for Mr. Laird?
Yeah, I suppose we could, sure, we could do that. We could, you mean, might take another item up?
Yes, sir. If you just give us this, we can do a variance. Mr. Laird, where do you think he's at?
Uh, I think he's at ten minutes, and that was about five minutes ago. But I think he's answering the representative's second. I found out that. They had no idea what that's about, so I was trying to explain that as well.
He and his brother.
Mr. Watson, he's my brother. He is also representing the Walter Schmidt here, which I believe was the second.
Are you an attorney?
Uh, no, sir.
You're not an attorney?
Maybe.
Do you think the Walton Sports Complex is going to be a difficult one?
No, sir.
Do you think it's going, can we go ahead? You want us to go ahead and approve it right now and move along?
Yes, I think that one will be easy if you're so inclined.
I don't want to hold these gentlemen up. I mean, you know, we're going to give them a fair opportunity to come here. I don't want to hold them up all night, so we can, you know, we can't do the second one, so we do the third one. Walton County Sports Complex. We appreciate, we understand. I think what we would do, y'all can just stay where you're at, and we'll let, who's here to speak on the Walton? If you would, come before the board and state your name for the record.
Yes, good evening. Rita Banhunyadi from Walton County Planning Department. I'm the project manager working on this variance request. The project is a Walton County Commissioners' requested project, and it's a sports complex north of 98.
Walton County Commissioners is asking for a variance?
Yes.
Boy, this is going to be tough, isn't it?
Let's show them.
Yeah. They filed our appeal. Did you believe that? And they asking us to hear variance.
It's pretty straightforward. There's a 32-acre sports complex that's being planned north of 98, and the comprehensive plan requires a 10-foot perimeter landscape buffer around the property, which they are providing. The land development code specifies the actual species of planting material that's supposed to go in that landscape buffer, and they are asking that they can reduce that. I have the specific numbers that the land development code requires and what they requested. The main reason why they're asking for this variance is for safety reasons, because they are planning a walk-in, multi-use path right along the boundary of the sports complex. And based on experts' opinion, the visibility of the landscaping is really dense along this walk-in running path. It reduces the visibility and the safety of the people who are using the path. So they would like to put in less landscape materials. They're meeting the comp plan portion of the requirement, only reducing the landscape, I mean, the land development code portion of the requirement for that reason.
Basically, what you're asking for, I believe, on our primary page, everyone has that copy?
Yes.
The canopy tree, county's three, you're requesting two?
Yes.
Understory tree, two, you're going to zero?
Yes, because that would be.
The shrubs from eight, you're going to five?
Yes.
And that's all you're asking for?
Yes.
You're not asking for anything else?
No.
How many linear feet? I mean, because that's per hundred feet, right?
Yes, that's per hundred feet.
And how many feet is this?
Um, the entire border, I think I have it somewhere. I'm not really.
Scott.
It's a lot. It's like 32 acres total, and it's a triangle.
So it's over a thousand? I mean, we're not talking about, we're not talking about going from two trees to no trees. We're talking about?
If we just go from three trees to two.
Per hundred feet?
Per hundred feet.
But we're talking like, you know, 30, 40 trees. We're not talking about two versus zero. We're talking about?
We're going 60% of the requirement. Yeah, basically, 60.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the audience here like to speak in regards to this item number three? No further comments? Close the public discussion?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
I want to take my eye. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Wait a minute. Mr. Fletcher, motion. Mr. Dixon, we'll let him second. Discussion? No discussion? I don't have to close it.
Not discuss it. Mr. Watson's not here yet.
What now?
Mr. Watson's not here yet. Might as well discuss it.
Scott wants to discuss it.
Don't want to down to number four.
Could I ask you a question?
No, can we go closer?
Look at that trail.
All right, go ahead.
Where's this, where's this track or whatever? Where is it at?
The map is, the map is the last item.
But where's the track at? Or whatever it is.
Oh, it's the print.
You know where the new proposed school site is?
It's behind the school.
So the longest trail right here, all the way around.
Just south of the intercoastal.
It's a multi-purpose trail to the far right.
It's just east of the Little Crystal.
So it goes around the entire perimeter?
So we're going from three trees down to two per hundred feet?
Per hundred feet. Right.
Well, that line right there is 1700 to 1000.
Plus five.
That's 1700.
I have a side plan, if that would be helpful.
There is one community. We're going to talk about what.
There's still a lot of.
You're letting me see that.
And the reason is safety.
Yeah, visibility.
I wonder what.
He's, he's all right. He's fine. He's just having a moment.
I mean, I find it hard to believe somebody's going to walk on this and get hurt with an extra tree for 100 feet.
It's more than an extra tree.
I think what it is, when you pull up there and you drive, and it's real, you know, some of this landscaping blocks the view, and they are concerned about blocking the view, in my understanding.
Are they going to drive dog parks on this?
Well, I don't know if it has to do with driving on that piece. It has to do with the view on 98.
Probably bicycles.
Yeah.
You can't say 98.
Well, it sounds good, Scott.
I'm just being, I mean, you know.
I know.
I'm just being there.
I believe the primary concern is the smaller, the understory and the shrubs, which if there would be someone hiding behind, my understanding.
I tell you, just, just hang on. We had, you want to open this back up to discussion? Because we closed it. If we close it, we're going to close it. Now, if you want to open it back up and entertain the discussion, we will.
Yeah. I don't want, I'm curious.
All right, rescind your motion.
I rescind my motion.
I can rescind it.
Do I have to rescind?
Well, we did. All right.
Now, let's, let's get a couple of questions. Around this track now, now it doesn't, I don't have any kind of landscape coming or anything in this background, okay? My question is, this is all going to be landscaped all the way around, correct? All the way around this track?
I have a landscape plan, but I can.
Basically, it's focused on, you don't have all these.
Basically, the interiors and the parking is going to be landscaped for the perimeter. It's at some places, which is whatever they keep, or they're trying to keep some of the area more of it, but they will need the 10 feet minimum with requirement, and the comp plan and all of those allows walking path to be in the template buffer. So they have that, and they just reduce the total number of time that they're going to go and putting in areas and closing it around.
Where's the safety factor coming in?
Your kids, your kids, children, this is a children's facility towards, and I think, I'm not over some trails designed to protect children. They've always seen that component, just because they want as much visibility, maximum visibility. So if you're a parent, if you're here somewhere, just right in the back of your head, or whatever, there's no chance that someone's going to jump out and grab them, or, you know, and you usually try to have it blinded and open, just for purely safety reasons.
For the kids.
Kids, adults, women, anybody that's using this trail, you want them to have a feeling of maximum safety so that they utilize the trail system. That's a common design feature of local towns' trails.
Is there going to be bicycling allowed on this?
Yeah. Dog parks?
That's another reason, you want to know that they'll see. So, walking, running, bicycling.
Yeah. No dogs?
No, sorry. Non-motorized.
Okay. I'm good. Make a motion to close the discussion.
Motion to close.
Second.
All favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
You don't second, or who's second? Karen, you got it first. I mean, motion is second. Any further discussions?
No, thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Dixon, how do you vote?
My approval.
Mr. Anderson, approve. Charlie?
Aye.
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 Charlie? All ayes. You good? Mr. Watson made it yet?
Yes. It's here.
We will go back to, uh.
It needs to be sworn, doesn't it?
The variance was granted. If they want to appeal our decision, they have 30 days to decide. It won't be the first time. Mr. Watson? Mr. Watson, you want to stand and raise your right hand to be sworn?
You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Okay, we will start with item number one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Bill Wyro. I'm an attorney that's been retained by David Kramer, Kramer, the appellate in this case, the Walton Apartments' appeal.
What's your last name?
Wyro, W-Y-R-O-U-G-H.
We appreciate your patience. Thank you, sir, for letting us go ahead with that.
Thank you. This, this case has been continued before. It can be a complicated case, but before we get started, I have to say that the parties are so close to settling this thing. And I am saying, at least I can speak for my client and the Walton Apartments' parties, that the discussions have even been ongoing tonight. If we open this thing up, it gets really involved, and there's a lot of history involved here. You know, we could start, but I would still ask for a continuance, because Mr. Carpenter would want to be called to the stand, and he's not here, or even perhaps subpoena other people. But I want to avoid all that and just simply make a motion for continuance, because I believe that my client, at least, is very close to a settlement that would allow him to withdraw his appeal in this case. So I'm not, you know, you can ask the other parties what they want to do, but I think that would save the board a lot of time. You know, this, this is, there's a lot of history in this case, and it's complicated, and it goes back a ways. So if the board wants to entertain that motion?
Mr. Chairman, if we could be heard?
Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
My name is Steve Bowman. I represent Rose Star.
You represent who?
Rose Star, the appellee. We come before this board ready to go forward tonight, and would like to get this matter resolved one way or another. So we oppose a continuance. It is true, there's been settlement negotiations involved, but, and, you know, we are probably pretty close to coming to reaching a settlement with Mr. Kramer. Mr. Laird, we have not been engaged in any settlement, any substantive settlement negotiations that have gotten us anywhere. So even if we were to tell you tonight that Mr. Kramer's case had been resolved, we still would have Mr. Laird to deal with. So we're here prepared to go forward. It has been continued a couple of times. I'm covering this matter for my law partner, Rick Peterman, who originally has appeared before this board, I believe, because he's out of town. But we are here prepared to go forward, and we object to a continuance.
And you represent, who do you represent?
Rose Star, who is the developer.
You represent the developer?
Yes, sir.
And he represents Mr. Kramer. And then we have Mr. Watson back here in the corner. Boy, this is going to be fun tonight, isn't it? Mr. Watson, what's your position on this?
We're also, um, questions.
Gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Laird is also very close to settlement, settling the issues, and so he's fine with the continuance if that is, meets your requirement, and you're okay with that. Essentially, he's been offered a settlement. He has not accepted it yet, but it's very close.
Okay. Come back.
Mr. Chairman, and I think I misspoke. My client just whispered in my ear that they are, they do think they're fairly close with Mr. Laird to a settlement. It's something neither settlement's going to be reached tonight because of, you know, there's moving parts to every settlement, of course. So we still would like to go forward with the hearing. We think there's some legal issues that you can rule on as far as this, this matter goes, that would put it to rest. We will continue to work towards settlement with Mr. Laird and Mr. Kramer. That is our intention. I mean, we've already given an easement, for instance, to try to accommodate some of the issues. So those things have been done, but we would like to, again, we came here prepared to go forward. We're ready to do so. We represent to the court, to the, to the board and Mr. Chairman, that we will continue in good faith to negotiate and work towards a settlement. Even, even if we were to prevail in this appeal, we will continue to work towards a settlement with these gentlemen.
It's mine. Haven't read the case, but I will believe that we have a developer want to do a project. Do you represent that developer?
Yes.
You have Mr. Laird, you have Mr. Kramer, for some reason, is opposing that development. And they are the ones filing the appeal to the development order. Am I somewhere right on this?
Yes, sir. One, one thing, too, to keep in mind, the development is under construction now. It's, it's in progress.
Okay.
Because the DO has been issued for, I forget the exact month, but for months.
Then what, what are they appealing? If your project is moving forward, what is the appeal?
Their appeal involves a claim regarding easement, and frankly, I don't understand, I mean, I know what they're saying, but I think it'd be better coming from Mr. Wyro, probably, as to what exactly their legal arguments.
Yeah, but what are they appealing?
The only thing they can appeal is, well, I mean, I think what the, the question is, is this board can only hear whether or not the planning department issued a development order in air.
Right.
So the development order has been issued, and they have legal argument as to why they think the development order should not have been issued. That would be what would be before you.
Okay, but have, okay, we have a development order. They're in the middle of construction.
Correct.
Now, they filed, they filed an appeal to the development order, disagreeing with the interpretation of the, of the, of the planning director.
To issue that order, correct.
Okay. So now then, but they're not, they're not opposing the development order, they're opposing an easement.
Well, the only thing they can do is appeal whether the development order was improperly issued, so.
Okay, but now if that development order was not properly issued?
That's their argument, yeah.
Okay, then he's got to cease construction.
Not until that's been determined, correct.
Wait a minute. What, if, if this board determines tonight that development order, we ruled that development, that the appellate, we approve his appeal, and say, yes, the development order should not have been issued, you have construction that has to stop.
Correct.
And they have 30, we're going to be clear, and I don't mean, I'm just trying to be clear now, I'm not, I'm not questioning, but if we make that determination tonight, they have 30 days to file with the circuit court. If they don't file with circuit court, then you will file to cease and cease if they don't, on behalf of this board, according to the code.
I would not, but county staff would. They would have to, they would take action. They could actually ask that the cease and cease, they could go to the court and ask that that be, they could bond it, basically, or ask that it not be implicate, be imposed as they did construction. But you are correct, that if this board grants the appeal, that the next thing that staff would be looking to do would be to stop construction on the project.
I think it would, yeah, there's building permits. I think it would actually stop, you know, the construction going forward on the building permits.
Absolutely. And I want to be crystal clear on that tonight, before we get into this.
And Mr. Chairman, as I think you maybe are zeroing in on, this would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars of delay damages to.
But, but if this board, I don't mean interrupting, but if this board upholds the appeal, and they issue cease and cease, you got a building that's in construction. You got, you got, you got liability here.
I'm not going to speak to what liability this board or the county has. I mean, that would be something that would be determined in a court of law. But you're correct, if this board grants the appeal, then the next step would be for county staff to stop construction on that project.
Mr. Bannerman, right?
Bowman.
Bowman. You represent the developer?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know the issues, and I don't know how the board is going to vote. But if we continue with this tonight, and we rule against your developer, you understand that he would cease and cease operation? You understand that?
Yes, sir.
Now, obviously, there's a lot of money here. I think that, you know, I, you know, on the other hand, you've got the developer wanting to build a building, and then, you know, you have these factors somewhat is a little, little nuisance here. I would like to see if you would be willing to try to negotiate for 30 days. Let's rehear this in March. And if you can't come to a determination or a settlement in 30 days, I would be more than happy. than happy for the board to hear. But, but, you know, there's a lot of factors here that this board is going to have to consider. And, and with construction already started, I think this appeal is, is, the timing's wrong. Now, but, you know, tell me how you feel about it.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may consult with my clients for just a second here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to ask the other board members before we make that determination.
I'm curious when they started construction, how long has it been going on and why is it taking so long to...
Mark.
We have a development or a building permit.
Mark, y'all know when that DO was issued? Mark, do y'all know when that DO was issued?
When it was issued?
Yeah, well, I know it was late last year, what, October, November, kind of, kind of?
I was going to say November.
Okay. So, they've had it.
To, to your point, Mr. Johnson, we, we always show the developers they're proceeding if, if there's an appeal and they want to go forward, they're proceeding. They're always, by then, clear to you.
On a development order, you only have 30 days to appeal development order? Was that done within the timeframe?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this had been scheduled towards the end of last year and it was continued. The parties, the parties agreed to the, the continuance.
December it was continued.
I want to say it's been continued twice.
And that was by agreement of both parties.
Correct. And we actually, from the last continuance, we gave them, like, in December, we gave them two months because we were trying to give them additional time to try to resolve the matter.
And in front of, I think one of the continuances, one of the attorneys was ill and couldn't be, or their spouse was ill, couldn't be, that was one.
Do I know, Mark? Please do.
Yeah.
As long as this goes out though, the further...
I believe one of the continuances was, I think one of the attorney's spouses was ill and we continued it for that reason, so.
The secretary is indicating that, I think it was supposed to have been on our October agenda, but we didn't, we'd canceled that meeting. And then, so it got pushed to the November, so that's why the timeframe's out of whack. You know, it's not closer to the time of the issuance of the, the DO.
Mr. Deis. This is not, it really, it's really not an issue about the development. It's a minor issue about an easement.
It, it's, it's an issue about an easement that was granted to some folks. Yes, yes. I'm not sure they oppose the actual development. It just has an issue dealing with easement.
I'm not so sure if they have the right to file an appeal on, on the easement.
Well, they, they appealed the issuance of the development order.
Pardon me?
They appealed the issuance of the development order and the building permits, actually the building permits, because they were allowed to be built when, their, their argument is the county didn't take into account the location of that easement.
Was the easement off the record?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And there's arguments on both sides. I don't want to make them for them.
Right, and there's...
I'm just trying to get a clear picture.
Well, like I said, we'll, we'll see what hap, I mean, what...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've, I've spoken to my client and also to Mr. Wyro and Mr. Watson, and I think we've, we're all in agreement to a continuance. The only wrinkle would be instead of the 30 days, if we could do it 60 so that we make sure we have a sufficient and ample time to, to do this, get the settlement done. And I think it'll be done much quicker than that, but we just don't want to have to come back to this board in 30 days and say, oh, we're really, really close now.
We give you whatever time, we, we would, we would give you 90 days.
Okay. I think 60 will be sufficient for us.
We have no problem giving you whatever time to work it out.
Okay.
Okay? So, we just, we, we're going to entertain a motion to continue this until they make it, make a...
Motion to extend for 60?
Yeah, I think I would do what the request is, maybe 60. That way we don't lose it in, in the shuffle. And then, that'll at least let them know that if they're, if they're not done, they need to come back to this board and explain why.
All parties are in agreement here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to extend for 60 days.
That'd be the April meeting.
Yes.
March, April.
Which you're not going to be here for.
No.
You're going to make it 90.
They can, they can continue it again. Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good luck with the negotiations.
Hey, Steve.
Do you want his back?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
This, this next item, if we can try to come up one by one and state your name before you talk for the record.
No. She don't joke, does she?
She's pretty serious.
She's at the LCD last night at the public workshop.
Was that her?
Yeah, she was. No nonsense.
Mr. Watson, are you representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, we have Vivian Chumel here. If you need an introduction to the item...
I'd rather start with the applicant.
Okay.
Is this something I'd just rather start with?
Faster.
Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to come before the board and ask us what you want tonight?
Yes, sir.
Are you with us or are you still driving?
Oh, boy. I think I still drive it. But I'm trying, I've got a PDF that would help, that we could go through with some documents. And so, we're just trying to see if we can get that set up.
PDFs, we can't see them. I don't know.
Turn it around. I think they'll rotate.
They will rotate. What will they think of next?
It'd be, I guess it'd just be, I don't even know what it means.
The longer they build, the further in the air.
It creates leverage.
Let's hope they can work it out.
How risky it's getting.
I mean, they agree to it, so. But it does put them in a corner at some point.
Are we ready, Mr. Watson? Do you want to be number four? I am, no problem you being number four.
I'm hurrying, sir. Trust me, I know our...
We're going to take, we're going to take 15 minutes while we're waiting on you. How about that?
Yes, sir.
How are you charging your client? Are you giving him a discount?
I'm actually here for free tonight, if it makes anybody happy.
Oh, come on.
I am.
Mark, have you ever heard a lawyer do anything free?
Exactly, right here.
Well, he hopped right up on that one, didn't he?
No, sir. Apparently, for whatever reason, my laptop is trying to be up there.
We're going to wait a minute. We have a board member. Y'all want to take five minutes?
I'd like to drink a water.
Five minutes. Scott, you need, you need some nutrition.
Look what time it is.
You got, oh, there you go.
But I hate to hear it, then you hear it gets sent through, then it's up.
You got a lot more amicable at that point?
Yeah.
If you have, I don't know the details, but we can't talk about it.
Yeah, we have a...
...subpoena witnesses. Obviously, they have some people they wanted to hear that weren't...
That's a hard thing to be in, wanting to do a development, somebody files an appeal.
Yes, yes, right.
You know, you got, you got money for it, you got, yeah, everything's likely involved and you got to wait three to six months to get a decision.
We've had, we've had folks sweat it out. I mean, if there was no one opposing it in the front, they'd sweat it out for those 30 days having to wait.
Yeah, so do you still talk about it?
That's going to be big money. Didn't we rent the building? Isn't that up on 331 North?
No, I didn't.
Then we did something with a little holding pond.
It looked, Mr. Kramer's familiar, but I don't remember. And that site time did look...
He wasn't before us. That kind of another area.
That could be that pond.
Where's the location of that, 331 North?
But that looks...
They came before us and DOT has an easement up, DOT has a...
Yeah, they already worked that out.
Yeah. This is that same project.
Yeah. Boy, you can't get it straight on that one, can you?
That's a big project.
It's in a map.
You could really use the, the border service, you know, it's easy. As good as you can, you can use the border service.
Yep. Especially if you draw it out.
Yeah.
That was their, well, their decision. I don't think, that didn't sound like a good idea to me. I guess they know. They're negotiating good things.
Yeah, it looks like it was going to be.
Yeah.
It seemed like it'd be in their best interest for them to go away. He had a lot to lose.
Yeah, I don't know. I think they probably feel... Because you think if you're, if you're...
Both, both.
Moment, just kind of do stuff.
Yeah.
You have these guys sitting back there waiting to be...
Who's immediate.
Yeah, I guess you're better to deal with it.
Well, you know, and, you know, the thing, if you want, and you say, settle. But like you said, you, you know, do you want to roll the dice and have the potential plays or do you want to...
I guess, I mean, like, if they were going to, you know, they better lose now and only have to...
It's busy. Not good busy. Not the good kind of busy.
I think he's going to lose.
I watched very busy. We moved the hand in there.
Fifteen or sixteen until a couple of those were duplicates, they're the same person with different party sending it. Then might reduce it to the eleven, twelve.
I mean, around here.
Individuals.
You can send a kid to the beach, but I don't know.
I had somebody last night talking about...
Y'all ready? Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir.
Are you ready?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I'm as ready as I'm going to be. The video or at least the software that I have for the presentation, I'm going to have to do it kind of manually versus being able to have one document. So, with that in mind...
We have everything in our package, right?
Um, no, sir. Uh, not as far as overall presentation and giving some backdrop to the overall variance request, no, sir.
We will need, whatever he presents, if he introduces it, we'll need to be able to get a copy of that to the, I don't know if you've got another thumb drive or if you got hard copies.
Well, I can, I can leave this thumb driver. So, if I put a picture up just showing what we're talking about...
Yeah, if you want, if you want the board to consider it as evidence, you know, and as part of your presentation, then...
Well, well, I can leave the thumb drive, which has everything on it.
What we really need is everything in our package. That's what we need. When we need that, you know, you, like, our attorney says, but, you know, you got to produce it, we got to enter it in evidence in case somebody wants to appeal this, but whenever you come before the board, we need everything in this package because some of us a little slow.
Yeah.
And we need, we need to look at it and fill it. So, do you think you need to come back when you get your, 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 your package completed?
Um, no, sir, I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, I have ten copies of the items that I think are the most pertinent as far as of that, and I can, I can represent the rest of it, I think verbally. And I do have what I'm going to give you as well as what's been your packets on, so I can put it up top and talk about it. But no, sir, I don't think so.
Okay. But would, just for future references, I know you come before us, please put everything you can in, in our booklet so we can, we can review it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. 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 Do we have another one of that?
Oh, that? Yeah, you can have one.
Right, right. Sorry. Thank you. Mr. Watson, let's get on with this show. Are you ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I am. Today, I'm before you requesting a variance to a, a 20-foot setback with regards to a 33-foot, actually 66-foot total government patent easement in Inlet Beach. And I apologize, I'm a little sick today, if I'm hoarse. The long and short, the history of this is that Inlet Beach were actually deeded out as government patents back in the 40s and 50s. When individuals received those, they received a government lot. The government lot is described as 213 or 211 or 227. Generally speaking, and while everybody makes mistakes with regards to those patents, sometimes you see them where there's easements in the wrong place. Ultimately, at the end of the day, this piece of property is a subparcial of one of those government patents. um, this piece of property is a subparcial of one of those government patents, and it contains a thirty-three-foot easement along the eastern boundary. On the other side of that eastern boundary is another thirty-three-foot easement for a total sixty-six-foot wide easement for ingress, egress, and utilities. And, basically, it's currently, the reason we're here today is currently the, um, planning and zoning, um, is interpreting the code in a particular way that is requiring us to set back from the actual easement twenty feet. Historically, it has not been interpreted that way. Um, historically, uh, and I've been involved in a number of, of actually abandonments of the easements, um, generally speaking, this, or not generally speaking, this is a local road which requires at least a forty-foot wide right-of-way.
What's the name of the road?
Um, it's, it's South Lake Shore Drive, the actual name, I apologize.
Is it a county maintained road?
Yes, sir, it is, County Maintained Ra- Road. It's a local road, one of the things that I was, well, I've got up here, it's just a location map of Walton County. If you look on Walton County's location map, yeah, it is a, considered a local road. Um, part of the, um, Land Development Code that I handed you this evening, um, like, the third page will go into what is required for a local road, a street classification as far as a right-of-way, and it's forty feet.
I respectfully disagree with you.
Okay.
If there, you, you, you saying that thirty-eight, if it's a sixty-foot right-of-way, you saying it's only need to be forty?
No, sir, I'm not, actually, I don't believe that's...
Well, what are you saying, this is a, you said, when was this lot planted?
This, this lot was never planted.
When, when was the government, uh, government lots issued?
Yes, sir, um, in the fifties.
Okay, so the easement was established in the fifties, so therefore, it's a sixty-six-foot easement, no matter what the county...
Oh, yes, sir.
What's your interpretation of the forty-foot, I respectfully disagree with you.
Well, I, I think you're misunderstanding me, sir, I'm not, I'm not claiming that we have a forty-foot ri- right-of-way here.
Okay, then, 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 it's, I told you I'm a little slow, so tell me why, tell me why you think forty-foot is adequate when there's a sixty-six-foot easement?
Yes, sir, okay, I'm gonna try to hit this as fast as I can in my own words, and maybe it'll make, maybe it'll make more sense, I don't know. Bottom line, we have sixty-six-foot easement there, that was reserved by the federal government for ingress and egress and a right-of-way. Um, historically, the county, the county has allowed people to build their homes or structures up to that easement, okay? As far as actual the road designation or classification within Walton County, it's just called a local road, which means that you at least have to have forty feet for a local road, that's what kind of the, the bill, you know, the, the key, you gotta have at least forty feet, and we've got sixty-six feet here. And I'm not trying to ask for abandonment of this easement or get into the easement, but the fact is, is that if you look in, right now, the county is interpreting that you have to have a, a twenty-foot setback off of a thirty-three, total sixty-six-foot wide easement, and there's nowhere in the county code does it specify that a setback is going to pull off of an edge of an easement, it just doesn't exist. Now, there are three pertinent sections that I've given you copies of that talk about the setbacks and what they need to be, and where they need to be pulled from. Um, the first one that's highlighted for you is five point zero 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 three, and it just says that, hey, this is the front of the lot, what we're talking about today is the front of the lot. And so the county's looking at the edge of this easement and saying, I want you to build twenty more feet off of this easement. The...
I, I'm, I'm, I'm still a little cloudy here.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
You, you have a, uh, let's, let's, where's your boundary line?
The boundary line is the center line of the easement.
Okay, so the boundary line's the center line of the sixty-six foot?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So, what you have, you have a lot with a thirty-foot easement on the lot?
Thirty-three foot easement, oh, yes, sir.
And the county says because that is the easement right-of-way dedicated in that recorded document, you need to be twenty feet away?
Well, no, sir, I don't know if they're saying that, um, they're, what, what, what they're saying is they're reading a particular part of the code in here to try to pull off the edge of that easement...
Right.
Twenty feet.
Right.
And I'm saying that that's a misinterpretation of the code.
Okay.
And then the other thing I handed around was a Supreme Court case from the state of Florida, as well as two Fifth Circuit cases, that adhere to the fact that if there's any ambiguity within a code, that that code should be read in favor of the landowner. Uh, that's a Florida Supreme Court case, and so I just put that out there to say, hey, when we're looking at this, the reality is, is when you get in this, and it's confusing, and it's not as clear as it should be, I mean, literally, the, the, I think, I think that's emphasized by the fact that the Planning Department, historically, over time, up until the last six months or so, have been interpreting it a particular way, and now they're interpreting it differently. And the fact that they're doing that just goes to, to further boasters the fact that this is ambiguous and not clear.
Okay, let's, let, and I'm gonna let you move on, but I got one, I have one other.
Yes, sir, any question, yes, sir.
You have a thirty-three-foot easement on the lot of record?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And you're saying your twenty-foot should be, begin where?
Uh, no, what I'm saying is, if you read it exactly per the code, is you would actually be in it, begin at the center line, and you come out twenty feet, which would be inside the easement area.
And, and you think, you think that's adequate?
No, sir, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying is, is that if you read the code, um, per the language of the code, that's where you'd be, but the reality is, the entire sixty-six feet is reserved for utilities, road right-of-way, and so therefore, you should not be encroaching into it unless you do get abandoned by somebody.
Okay.
So, there's no issues with the sixty-six-foot ride.
Okay.
It's the twenty feet that we're being requested to back off, because if nothing else, you can look at it sixty-six-foot wide, right? And if you back off twenty feet on each side, you're talking about eighty-six feet.
Right.
For a road that under Walton County's requirements has to have at least forty feet. Um, I have got...
Is this a new construction, or is it a, is this thing?
Well, I mean, that's where the story gets really nice and complicated, is, the reason we're here today, I mean, when we get down to it, is I've got a client, and, and I know the majority of the people that are here opposing it today is, is the fact that she owns, she owns approximately, um, I have it right here, I mean, basically, she owns like, the seven pieces of prox-, this is approximately, seven pieces of property in Inlet Beach, or so. Three of them are rental homes, one of them is a second home residence that she uses as a second home. She lives in Atlanta, um, with her husband, and the intent is for her to, it's her second home legally, and her, and doesn't rent it. That's at thirty seven, that's at thirty-seven, um, hold on, sorry. Anyway, all right, she's got a second home, thirty-seven West Park Place Avenue. Her intent is, this has got a house on it that if I showed you the pictures, is dilapidated, or eyesore for the community. Um, what she'd like to do is tear it down and build a second home. I mean, I, I came here today, part of the things I asked her, I'm like, you know, part of the problem that we have back here at issue is that individuals believe that we're building rental homes here, we wanna, well, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but at the end of the day, is that this is going to be her second residence, and then it's going to be her permanent residence once she retires. What you do have in your packet is, and, um, Mr. Vele may, um, can pull it out, and, and it's in there for the purpose of being able to evaluate it from an architectural standpoint. The reality is, is that this setback, that first off, I don't believe, I, I think that we're misinterpreting it, and it's wrong, and we should be interpreted to the fact where we shouldn't have to set off the easement. But that, but that's why I'm here today, because, um, instead of taking issue with that as much as showing y'all why it shouldn't be, is saying, hey, I've got a hardship, we've got a situation here where the code has been cha-, has been looked at previously.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm still trying to, are you gonna tear this house down and build another house?
I'm sorry, the house, the house, if we're able to get a, this variance, then the house would be removed, it would be removed. Currently, the house is actually extending into the area that we're trying to characterize as an easement now, I mean, a variance, this setback, is currently existing into that area, it's also existing into, extending into the side setback on the south, so I've got basically a non-conforming structure encroaching in two setbacks.
How much does it extend into the twenty-foot setback?
It extends in the twenty-foot setback approximately six to seven feet.
Six, seven feet.
And I've, and I've got, um...
And on the east side, how much is it?
That's on the, that's on the east side, which is the front of the lot, yes, sir, that is correct.
And, and you wanna tear this down and build at the zero lot line?
No, sir, not zero lot line, I wanna be able to build up to the easement, my lot is another thirty-five feet into the easement.
Well, zero variance, uh, zero, uh, what am I, setback, zero setback.
Well, the setback still exists, it's just within the easement area.
Exactly.
I'm not trying to say we don't, I'm not asking for a zero ver- uh, zero lot line or a zero setback.
Zero, okay.
And so...
All right, I think I'm good, so go ahead with your presentation.
If you look at your, your packet, is that every single one of the things that the write-up with the Planning Department loo- reviews is that, you know, it's not injurious to the neighborhood, if you look one through the, the staff findings, one will the grant, the variance be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of regulations with the code? The answer is that the purpose of variance is not expected to be injur- injurious to the neighborhood. And I'm gonna paraphrase these things, I know y'all have a long night. The second one, granted variance will not permit establishment of any use that is not permitted in a land use district, and it's not, it's not gonna create any, any use, it's not allowed there. Three and four are why we're here today, because basically it talks about proof of unique circumstances. Um, the, eh, and the, um, Planning Department acknowledges the fact that it's unique circumstance in the sense that it's got thirty-three-foot gap, patent easement for ingress and egress along the property border. Also, the unique circumstance is that we've got an existing structure that is actually non-conforming, encroaching into two different setbacks, in fact, the property to the south, it actually encroaches barely into that neighbor's property. So essentially, if we could tear this down and rebuild it, um, we actually take care of two problems at one time. The, the second thing, there, there must be proof of unnecessary hardship, um, we just wanted that. Number five, it's necessary for reasonable use of land, building variances granted for minimum variance that will accomplish that purpose. Granted, this purpose variance will allow the applicant to encroach into this front setback, the applicant will not, will have to prove the evidence whether it's minimum amount setback reduction that's accomplished the purpose. Again, we're, the setback for the code is inside the easement, and this is something that, um, if you look at the code reading, the methodology, and I've got highlighted and redlined, um, the pertinent parts, and so, historically, we've had to build outside the easement, we don't wanna go there. This is something that's being read new, and the intent, the site plan that you have in this packet is to break the structure up, instead of having the structure be one solid, uniform structure, like these houses that are being done in Greaton Beach or whatever for rental purposes, the intent is actually to build a main residence, create a courtyard, swimming pool type area or something in between, and then a, a garage auxiliary structure to the west.
I don't think we have that. And I've got a, I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Based on how this is being presented, isn't this a bigger, a bigger issue in terms of this isn't an request for a specific variance, this is actually a, uh, an appeal to, to, I guess it's not a director's decision, or maybe it is a director's decision because they've been interpreting it differently? I mean, because this technically, we're appealing how staff is interpreting this throughout the county, it's not a one parcel thing.
Will, may I speak to that?
Hang on.
Yes, sir.
He's using, you know, he's using the, the, uh, court finance to justify the variance request. I don't think we can interpret this as a, uh, as an appeal of the Planning Department's interpretation, he's trying to justify us granting this variance based on his interpretation.
Right, but if that's how the county's interpreting, we couldn't possibly, well, I don't see how we would interpret against that unless we're interpreting the policy.
We're not.
And not the variance, we don't see how we grant a variance.
Just because he made the presentation doesn't mean we have to swallow it, put it behind a secret. So, we can make him, we can make him do his presentation, then we'll let the county staff do their presentation, but, you know, at the end of the day, he's asking for a variance. Now, he's trying to justify, you know, in a way that I, right now, I respectfully disagree with.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to that for just a second?
Sure.
Um, last year, I was in front of this board dealing with a appeal of a decision, the one with, with, with fireplaces. And that was a totally different situation in the sense that you had a house, somebody's trying to build a house, and they're trying to get a fireplace allowed in the setback, and that would impact everybody countywide, because it wasn't like the fireplace already existed. The reason the variance is here is that if you've got a unique situation that the guy next door might not have, they don't have the house in, in the setback, they don't have the encroachment to the south, um, then, I, I debated that. But right now, that coupled with the fact that we haven't had a planning director, um, you know, who do you go to to get the letter that says, you know, we, we say this, I, I'll tell you right now, I met with two planning staff, um, and one planner read it like I read it, and another planner read it completely different. And, um, the reason I'm here tonight is because the decision was made essentially not to make a decision, except to say, you know what, you've got a unique situation, it makes sense that you can go before the board and, and show them, explain them, I'm not trying to affect everybody countywide, but this is the way we used to interpret it last year, the, the, the harm that's being done to my client is that properties due to the south, that if you actually look at the aerial photo, is built up to the line. The property across the, the street is built up to the easement, there's a wall, there's pools that are being put in the same twenty, and that subdivision was, was, um, there's permits that are issued in there in nineteen, I mean, two thousand fifteen, a year and a half ago, somebody has pulled a permit directly across the street, and they're building a pool in the same twenty feet we're talking about. And, um, the, the building to the south is up to the line, the building south of that is up to the line, they're townhomes.
I'm gonna take, then, I think I understand your concerns here.
As long as he's comfortable with the fact that he's asking for relief from something that the, that the department is interpreting in a different way, and that we have to see it that way, not as a...
You cannot, this Walton County cannot interpret the setback to begin at a boundary line that is used as an easement. If you do that, then you, if you do that, then you won't have houses built to the right-of-way. And you cannot allow, and, and, and I respectfully disagree with his interpretation, cause I, you know, Williams Road, there's all kinds of county roads, and you say, my property goes in the middle of that road, therefore, my, I build to the right-of-way, is it strictly wrong?
Sure, I, I think we'll get into that, I'm just trying to get past that initial, big picture issue of whether it's a, a decision that's being appealed, or it's an actual variance.
No, he's asking for a variance, based on...
A hardship that...
Right. Mr. Dyke, so you wanna...
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I, I think you're both right, allow Mr. Watson to finish his presentation, allow staff, and then I think a lot of this will be probably flushed out during your discussion.
Okay, thank you.
But it is a variance.
Yes, it's a real variance request.
Go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Yes, sir, the, the, if you look at the aerial that's in the variance request, the variance package, you can see the properties to the south are built up to the right-of-way. Um, I understand...
Do you represent this drawing?
No, sir, I'm representing this drawing right here.
Yeah.
The drawing that you just held up, sir, actually shows where there's encroachments into the ba- into the, um, the, the actual boundaries of the surrounding setbacks, according to the interpretation today, but this one...
This drawing here represents the property line in the easement, and your slash marks is a twenty-foot setback, and the house is built within that.
Yes, sir, that is exactly correct. And the, the subdivision directly to the east of this property, across the right-of-way, has built up, has been platted up to the, the, the right-of-way line, the subdivision due north, one block north, has been built up to the right-of-way sixty-six-foot easement. The, the, um, I spoke with the, um, with, um, roadway and, and Public Works, and, um, to confirm that this was a forty-foot required road, um, there is sixty-six-foot wide u- usable there. Um, if you look at the su- the actual structure to the south that is built up to the line, I have pictures I was gonna show you today that there's actually, uh, a structure that's built into the sixty-six-foot easement as well. Um, and the, the point is, is that historically, this is how it's always been interpreted, and all of a sudden, we're interpreting it different. If you look in the code, and I, I understand your point with regards to the right-of-way, but the actual code is what we're here about today, and when you deal, when you, there is no setback from an easement. It doesn't exist, you can't find it in the co- you cannot find that sentence in the code. And that's the hardship, is that we're interpreting the code a particular way that doesn't even exist in there, it's like, and, and where it's, where it's being brought from is the right-of-way protection area that's in the same packet that I sent to you. And, point is, I was coming today to say, yeah, we've got two encroachments that are non-conforming. My client wants to tear it down, wants to split the structures up, build something nice, I'm here to tell you that I've done the numbers, if you leave the, if you leave, this is not about building a bigger structure, if you leave the setbacks with the twenty feet, and the seven and a half on each side, and fifteen in the back, you could actually build a structure with eight parking sp- and fifteen in the back, you could actually build a structure with eight parking spaces on here on the structure, and it could be more than seventeen thousand square feet. I'm here today that my client is willing to represent today in front of everybody, they're going to build something less than six thousand square feet. They're willing not to rent the house for more than four years. It's not going to be a rental, it's their second home. And they would do perpetually, except that's kind of crazy if you're gonna turn around and sell it at some point because you get old and you end up selling things. But they're willing to put these restrictions, saying that they're not gonna do air-conditioned space above three, above three stories. So, so we try to eliminate some of the concerns that I'm sure this crowd has about creating some rental. But if she can't build this and split it up, the intent was to put something architectural pleasing, where you have a main house toward the front, a guest house towards the back, and a pool courthouse in the middle. But if we aren't allowed to do something of that nature, then it is going to turn into a rental property, and it's not gonna be a residential property, it's gonna be a primary residence. And a rental property is legal in that neighborhood. So this is actually something that this person's trying to improve the neighborhood. I'm sorry, I thought I was turning off. We're not here trying to build a bigger structure, we're trying to build a smaller structure. The whole intent of this is to try to actually be better. This person has got, it's like, seven properties in this neighborhood, she wants to do good by the neighborhood, she wants to be nice and pleasing, but at the end of the day, then she's either gonna treat it as investment, have to sell it, or she's gonna build some other house in there, or the dilapidated house will sit there indefinitely. And so, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I think there is an interesting argument to have on the one respect, on the setback issue. But how, if you can build seventeen thousand square feet, do you have a hardship?
No, what I'm saying is, no, I understand. I'm saying that if you, if you left the setbacks, twenty from the easement, twenty from the sides, I mean, seven and a half from the sides, and fifteen from the back, I'm saying the actual footage that's left on the lot is four thousand seven hundred something odd square feet.
Per floor?
Per floor. And if I go four floors and I put parking on the bottom floor, I got four stories, I got a seventeen thousand square foot structure. Now, that's what could be built there.
Again, but you've gotta show a hardship.
Not to build that.
And if you can build that kind of square footage...
Not to build that. If I can get all the parking on site and handle all the stormwater, I don't have to show a hardship.
No, but to get the variance.
No, 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 I don't, I don't need the variance to build that.
I know, but I'm saying is to get as a variance...
No, my hardship, my hardship is I've got a dilapidated structure that's encroaching into a current setback that the county's established at twenty feet, which they didn't, they didn't actually enforce six months, a year ago. I've got an encroachment to the south that is actually standing over the property line. And then the other hardship is that other members up and down the street, other people have been allowed to build within the same area, and that's, and that's the hardship.
But that's not a hardship. It might not be fair, but it's not a hardship.
Well, I think...
I think, like I said, there is an interesting point to argue and discuss, you know, contrary to a director's decision of how to interpret a setback.
Yeah.
But when you say you can build seventeen thousand square feet, you know, under any circumstances, it's hard to say that there's a hardship. It may not be fair, but not being fair is not a hardship.
I see what you're saying. What you're saying, if you have a non-buildable lot, and then you come back to us, that's what we're talking about.
If you were, yeah, if it was getting too small, but even the non-conforming use, you can still expand, you just can't expand within the non-conformity you can add behind it. So even that is not...
I understand what you're saying. I think hardship is not actually defined anywhere within the code, but the fact is, is that if I've got a non-conforming structure, I think that it can be within the definition of hardship. And I think that if, again, we're, I'm dealing with a situation where the planning department a year ago was doing things different, and now they're not.
Again, but that's, that could be argued and that could be...
Well, it goes back to, and maybe this is something, you go ahead.
We're gonna move along.
Okay.
I think hardship is when you come back before and ask to have a variance on the structure up there, then you interpret a hardship interpretation of our code. But anyway, you go ahead, let's sum this up, give everybody that opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask him a quick question first?
Sure.
I thought I just heard you say that they didn't enforce the encroachment six or eight months ago. When was this house built?
This house was built in the eighties. And what I was just saying is that the planning department in years past have created, has treated this, not only easement, but also the twenty feet on the, off of the easement differently. And that's all, that's all I was saying, is that, and that goes back to the ambiguous right now, it's my understanding that the code is actually being rewritten with regards to these sections because of the ambiguity. I mean, so I'm in the middle, I've got a director that's just, you know, approved last county commission meeting. I've got sections that are being rewritten right now to replace the problems that we have now to fully interpret it, and I've got a client that's just trying to actually do something that we're willing to try to make people feel comfortable, we're not building a rental house, and that's where I am. I'm just stuck in the middle.
We understand. Charlie, you have something?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If the, if the easement is sixty-six feet and it's thirty-three feet on your side...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then the roadway existing is, it's got a forty-foot roadway, which would be twenty feet on your side, from the same center line as the easement?
Technically, the roadway that's existing is actually more like twenty-three feet wide. That actually exists. I was just referring to the local requirement for local roads to have at least forty feet to build in, as well as having utilities and easements with, I mean, within that forty feet.
Okay, well, if it, if it's twenty-three feet now on your side...
Yes, sir. I know, it'd be like fourteen feet on our side, thirteen, well, you know, eleven, twelve feet on our side. The road's small, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so the road is not forty feet wide, or the right-of-way?
No, sir, the actual pavement is more like twenty-three feet wide.
Okay, but I mean, like, they've got a, they've got pavement, and then they've got like space for others, like sidewalks or something like that.
There's pavement, there's sand, there's landscaping, there's...
Yeah, so, but essentially, there would be twenty feet from the center line of that road on a forty-foot, on a forty-foot road, there'd be twenty feet on your side?
Yes, sir.
And then your setback would be twenty feet from that right-of-way in normal, normal...
That's really not the way the code reads, but the way that I'm requesting to build the structure, it would actually be the twenty feet, and then you, you've got another thirteen feet before we build some kind of structure. Because you've got thirty-three feet wide, you've got the twenty feet, and then you've got another thirteen feet.
Yeah, and then thirteen feet. But normally, you setback your, your front setback would be twenty feet from the edge of the right-of-way, of the road.
Normally, if, yes, sir, if you did not own the right-of-way, the right-of-way would be twenty, it would be twenty feet from the edge of the lot, is the way it's described. You've got twenty feet from the edge of the lot.
And so, so you would, you're technically only needing like seven feet then, that you're wanting to...
If you wanted to try to use that interpretation, yes, sir. The thing is, is that the county sets out that the local road has to be at least a forty-foot right-of-way to protect it. They even actually have that if your easement is less than the forty feet, there's a forty-foot wide, or it could be fifty or whatever, but there's actual right-of-way protection zone that actually extends out from the center line in order to protect that area. But in this case, we're dealing with a sixty-six foot wide, so we're not even under that part of this code. And so, in other words, there's more than enough property there for a twenty-three-foot wide road down the middle, for all the utilities that are necessary, as well as anything else that's needed within that right-of-way.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Yeah.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a copy of the patent for lot two thirty-seven?
I'm sorry, do I have the what?
Do you have a copy of the patent?
With me?
Yeah.
No, sir, I don't think I do have a copy of that.
All right. The reason I'm saying this, and you might, once I tell you this, you might wanna withdraw or whatever.
I gotcha.
Some of those, some of those patents in Governor Lot Thirty-Six, some of them specifically say easement, thirty-three foot easement for ingress, egress, and public utilities. Some of them say a sixty-six foot right-of-way for the same thing. There's a difference in right-of-way and easement. Now, having worked in that area extensively for the last four years, and knowing where you're coming from with what the county did things way long time ago, if that government patent says right-of-way, then from the end, from wherever that right-of-way is, then, you know, seven and a half, fifteen, twenty. I'm also for it, I also interpret it as if it's an easement, then there is no setback because there's a thirty-three foot right-of-way right there, and you're already gonna be twenty feet in, from your lot line anyway. I know for a fact that the county has honored that for years and years and years. But my whole point now is, there's a big difference, and I don't know what this government patent on two thirty-seven says, so I'm just letting you know.
I appreciate that.
The reason I'm saying that is because the board, we might say something and might rule in one way, but we might be all wrong. That's my, that's my whole point, and we gotta, you know, obviously, we have to protect the public.
Sure.
And that's my whole point here.
Well, yes, sir. Based on your, your comments, if we do an either-or type conversation here, it is a government patent that preserves a thirty-three foot wide easement for ingress and egress along the thirty-three feet eastern boundary, and that's what it says. I don't have it here today, but I don't, I don't need to, to know that sixty-six foot right-of-way does not exist on that patent. It's your standard...
I agree.
I understand. And my point is, is to bring up your point, is that the county has always maintained, you stay out of the thirty-three feet, because we're not gonna give you a building permit to build a house in the thirty-three feet.
Mr. Watson...
But the setback's over at twenty.
We, you know, we're getting into this repetition...
Yes, sir, I agree.
And I appreciate, you know, if you're close to being done, we're gonna give you the opportunity to come back after we hear from staff, because, you know, we, we hear a lot of interpretation that staff is doing, let's hear what they have to say about this. You will have the right to come back after we get through with everyone else that'd like to speak in this variance. I got you. I think we understand where you're coming from.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Watson, do you have any witnesses, or were you just the only?
No, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we...
Let's hear from staff. Ms. Shale, you're not gonna...
I think she'll maybe assist me with this one. And we do have a new procedure. We are going to be introducing our staff reports into the record at each, for each, each report. So that is what I'd like to do to start, is enter my staff report into the record.
Is it in our package?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, let me tell you why we're doing this. We, of course, the docs become the attorney, we are handling an appeal right now in our office where the argument was made that the actual staff report was not accepted by the chair of the board into evidence, and thus, the court could not consider it. We think we argued a rapid, and in over a month's caution, we've been asking each board to take the evidence, to take the staff report and formally admit it into evidence.
Wait, wait, wait. If that argument is true, then no document in our booklet can be entered into evidence.
Well, we're probably gonna find out next quarter, but in over a month's caution, we've been doing it the last month for every board.
Mr. Dykes?
Yes, sir.
Do you think we should just enter all documents in our booklet each month into evidence?
I think if staff requests it, you as a board will need to decide whether or not you want to accept it over any objection, but I can tell you that other boards that I represent, usually staff will introduce these, those records in, because it'll have deeds, it'll have staff reports, it'll have...
But the whole, but the total booklet?
I don't know that, that, if they're asking to put the whole booklet in now, but I think what they're saying is they definitely want to put the one in for the staff.
But, Mark, if there's, you know, we go through these booklets, and they're presented, we make decisions from that. If they're not entered into evidence, because it's my understanding, if it's in our booklet, it's part of it, it's evidence, there don't need to be any of that evidence.
The argument is, it's not formal evidence that we can rely, that you can rely on to make a decision unless it's formally accepted into evidence by the board or by the chair, if that's the...
And what Mr. Davis is talking about is, when you go on appeal, the court's only allowed to consider those things that the board took as, took in as evidence.
Right, and that's, see, our appeal, if our variance is appealed to the circuit court, if we don't enter that, these documents in, then you say they can't use.
That's the argument. We've always taken the position that since you consider it and you, it was testified from, and there were no objections to that, then it was part of the record. But we've now had a formal objection to that argument, and so, in a, quite frankly, just in abundance of caution, we're asking each of our boards to accept, at the very least, our staff report into evidence formally, so we don't have that argument.
And the staff is allowed to ask, just like Mr. Watson's allowed you, is allowed to ask you to take anything into evidence that they might bring to these hearings, it'll be up to the board on whether they do it. But I can tell you, I would agree that it's a smart course to eliminate that type of argument.
But I think, my position is, we need to enter the whole booklet, because every, every item come before us is subject to appeal.
Correct, and I understand that. What I'm saying is, the board should either ask staff, would you like us to enter in the book, the matters from the booklet? I would do it on a case-by-case basis, though, because...
Why?
I'm sorry?
Why?
Because if staff doesn't ask you to do it, or the applicant doesn't ask you to put it into evidence...
But they may not know they're gonna file the appeal.
It doesn't matter, that would be on them to ask that it be done.
There might be a reason we don't want some of that kind of thing. That's a possibility, but a large possibility, but a possibility.
I understand what you're saying for ease and just to ensure that everything's in. However, if you're to look at it as, you know, staff's supposed to put on their evidence, the applicant's supposed to put on their evidence, you're just the decider, then you just take in what they want to give you. If they don't want to give you a deed to look at, then you don't, you don't consider the deed, because they want to talk about it.
What happens when you lose our appeal, because you don't have our documents?
Well, if they didn't put the deed in, I'll be arguing that the court shouldn't look at the deed, you know, so it goes both ways.
I just, okay. You're gonna enter the staff report in this one?
Did you want to, just so I'm clear, when you say enter a staff report, are we talking about the three-page staff report and all the backup that's included under tab, I'm sorry, under tab two?
Yes.
And then...
That would include the exhibits that are part of the staff report.
So that would be everything that's in the booklet?
Yes, sir.
Per that variance?
Yes, sir. And the only thing would be is if Mr. Watson has any objection, he can put it on the record.
Mr. Watson, any objection?
No, sir.
So enter exhibit A. Do we have any exhibits yet from, entered into the, from Mr. Watson?
No, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Watson, the only ones that you spoke of was the site plan, and you did show the photograph, or the aerial photograph of the property. Then obviously, you can present anything else when you come back up if you'd like.
What about these?
Yeah, these haven't been logged.
And he can do that when he comes back up, but would you like to enter the case law as well as the, the code provisions that you listed?
At the very least, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the staff has no objection.
So we're gonna enter the applicant, chapter B, development design as exhibit A?
Yes, sir.
And then we're gonna, applicant on the case law as exhibit B?
Yes, sir.
And then we're gonna enter the staff report as the staff report exhibit A?
Yes, staff exhibit A.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to start by saying that this, I can't remember exactly how many months ago it came up. It did come up during staff review of building plans and for single-family homes, could be vacant lots or redevelopment, and there were two staff members who were doing reviews at the time, and they were reading the language, and that is where they determined that we did have to adhere to the, what Mr. Watson handed out page...
Section five point oh four oh six.
Right-of-way protection that he has highlighted, and therefore, it would be necessary for an applicant to request a variance should the right-of-way cut, or go into the, over the setback, front setback line or side.
I think Mr. Rosenheim made a good point. This is a right-of-way. This section deals with right-of-way protection, and typically, right-of-way protection is geared towards future road conditions, not necessarily today's road condition. So you're looking at the interest of the public for the future, and that includes utilities and other things that may be in that right-of-way, not just the existing pavement that's there. I think a critical portion here is that you use that forty feet there when you don't have, when you have a situation where you have a right-of-way that's less than that forty feet. In this case, we have a much larger than the 40-feet right-of-way. So it's pretty clear that this 40-foot reference down here for local is, is what you would use when you had an existing right-of-way that was inadequate. It didn't, it didn't encompass that at least minimum of 40-feet.
But the deed is saying that this one is a...
It's much greater.
It's much greater.
The 66 is a right-of-way, not an easement.
That's correct.
Do y'all have a copy of the patent?
No, no. Actually, there is in your packet, the, there is the warranty deed, and it does not have the patent, but there is...
That, that date doesn't mean nothing unless you got that patent. I mean, you know, I'm just telling you, it's either...
That's a good point.
Or an easement. Hold on to the patent, that was issued in 1920, whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point.
So, can't y'all go get it offline real quick and enter it in evidence? We've done that before.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not being smart, but what difference does it make?
It makes a lot of difference.
Why does it make a difference?
If it's a right-of-way, then the regular setbacks for the county apply. If it's an easement, then he can't build, he can build, in other words, he's got a zero setback on the edge of that easement. It's as simple as that. There's, this is all fluff.
Easement's...
It's either an easement or right-of-way. And there's...
There's no setback off an easement.
Easement can't be private.
There's no setback on an easement. It's zero.
It's like having a setback off a buffer. It's like there's no...
They can be a picture of someone's...
That's the way it is. And, you know, there's, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
What's, uh, what's your legal opinion?
Actually, the story's not correct. If, if it's...
I know I'm correct.
Hang on a minute, Scott. Scott, just hang on a minute. Okay, then I think we need to get a copy of it. It wouldn't be that difficult to get it?
Kristen is going to try and pull a fast one here.
I think, but one thing, short recess.
Page 23.
Somewhere about that, and then go up and back, somewhere 153.
Scott?
Well, I'm just trying to help.
Scott, we're gonna take a recess. You need a break.
I did.
We're gonna take this five minutes. Give her a chance to pull that.
That's a good idea.
We're gonna call it back to order?
Right-of-way.
Did you bring us copies? That's gonna be, uh, exhibit B?
Exhibit B, staff's exhibit B?
Staff's exhibit B. So enter. What did it say, Ms. Shale?
It is a right-of-way. Described as a right-of-way.
So we don't have to, to have any more discussion on difference in easement and right-of-way?
So you're to a right-of-way, not exceeding 150. Well, that patent, half of that 66-foot was on the font. So it's only gonna show 33-foot of that. And the joint in 238 will have the other 33-foot.
Go ahead. Are y'all through? Come on. Go ahead.
Any, well, I would, I don't think there's much else for us to add, other than, I'm a, I have a little concern that the case is, is not right, because we don't have a building plan. So we're asking for a variance that may not be, it may not be zero, when they actually build the building. And in, in my experience, we typically don't do that. We usually have a set, you, you ask for a variance for what you need, not more or less. You ask for the specific variance that you need.
They do not have a building plan?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Any, any, anybody has any questions? It has always been my belief that you don't take and ask for a variance unless you have a building structure that you want to put on it. I agree with you 100%. I don't think we can start allowing variances on, to me, it's a blanket. It's an open there. So you come and get the variance, you want to build a structure, and you don't know what you want to build. I just, that, that, that kind of amazes me. I appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to come up and come, state your name for the record, please?
My name is Rich Jaffe. It's J-A-F-F-E. I am here as the vice president of the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. I think you have probably seen that there are a lot of letters in your packet from our residents, our homeowners, and they are all objecting to this supposed variance here. You know, one of the issues that Mr. Watson brought out, and that you all have keyed in on very succinctly, is the word hardship. Ladies and gentlemen, hardship is described as a severe suffering or privation. I would submit to you, this is neither. This is a boondoggle. Our community, over the last few years, has been inundated with developers who want to push the envelopes. They are pushing setbacks, they are pushing height requirements, they are pushing parking requirements, all to chase the buck. You heard Mr. Watson say that the woman who owns this property owns seven properties in our neighborhood. She doesn't live there. She doesn't have a vested interest in our community. She is doing the same thing the developers are doing. This project, for which there is no building plan, as you just heard, outlines in a rough sketch, basically, a Rosemary Beach-style main house and a carriage house.
Do you have a drawing of it?
He submitted it, I believe, in your packet.
No, he didn't submit a drawing. He said that that's, uh, he said that's an ideal. There's not a drawing, is there?
Well, yeah. Here's...
You got a drawing?
This was passed out to the residents.
Are we gonna be allowed to keep that?
You can keep. It was, in fact, it was, I saw it up on your screen as well, briefly. It's in his presentation, or lack thereof.
You have some notes on the back of it? You need to keep that? Are we gonna enter this into exhibit?
I'll tell you what, how about, how about if I, I give that back to you as soon as I'm done? The notes would help me.
Be honest with you, I don't think we need it.
Yeah, I don't think we need it.
Because...
I mean, there's not much to it, as you can see.
No.
All right. The woman who owns this property talked this afternoon with one of our board members in explaining her variance. The variance she's requesting, she said, is because when they build the house, they want to see the water. I think we'd all like to see the water from our houses, if we could. But I don't consider that a hardship. We would be perfectly happy, as a neighborhood association, to see the structure that is there now raised. Let them put something else there, fine. But do it within the regulations and requirements that we all have to abide by, rather than thinking, as so many of these developers do, that the rules don't apply to them. Well, they do. We are all living, especially in Inlet Beach, as you just heard, with right-of-ways and with setbacks. All of the properties have them. I have them at my house. I have them on a future lot that I hope to develop with a house. This is not going to be this woman's residence. It is simply another for-profit piece of property that she wants to own, regardless of what her attorney wants you to believe. In listening to his not-so-veiled threat to you and to us, that if she doesn't get this, she's gonna build some massive 17,000-foot structure on this property, I got news for you. We have a comprehensive plan. I don't think that would fly. And that, too, would be subject to all the setbacks and all the rest of the restrictions and requirements and everything else that the rest of us have to abide by. The Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association would request that you all deny this sham of a hardship request for a variance. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
We appreciate you coming up. Thanks. Come up, state your name for the record, ma'am.
Yes, Betty Letcher. I live at Inlet Beach. I live, uh, one block over. I bought my property in 76. I knew that there is a 33-foot easement. We didn't move here permanently until 96. In 97, we were gonna make it our permanent home. I was told, at the time, by Latilda, that was in planning, that I could not move one thing. I had to do, could not go any further out. So I had to go up another story. So I abided by that. That is my permanent home. For the lady that is wanting this, I know for a fact, it's not gonna be her permanent home. Right across the street is what now the county is allowing for trailers to park after they launch their boat. Now, don't forget, this road, Walton, South Walton Lake Shore, is where there is a boat launch for emergencies. So when you don't even see a plan, she's got plenty of room. She has .172 of an acre to build another rental house on. And on the south side, no, excuse me, on the north side, I don't know what that easement is, but that's not a county road. That is a little private drive that goes down there. So I really do hope y'all consider this. It is totally wrong. We all have to abide by what the county sets in front of us. I did. And I don't rent my house. It's my permanent home. But it's only fair that someone come in here and say they want a zero setback, and you don't even see any plans of what they're gonna build? That is totally, totally wrong. And I hope you will deny it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Anyone else? Anyone else from the audience? Mr. Watson?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
You can, you, you got the final say?
First, first, I'd like to give the board members one other document to be entered into evidence.
That's gonna be the applicant, exhibit C?
Yes, sir.
You can go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Yes, sir. Basically, I'm just back up here to, at the very least, if we're gonna talk about rules don't apply, what I've handed you is basically a letter denying my client's request to be a member of the Inlet Beach, Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. That association was formed, it's a nonprofit by statute, and is formed to actually incorporate the members of Inlet Beach. She requested, sent in a check, and was denied. And as you can see, she was denied because apparently their views aren't the same. And last I checked, this is America. And last I checked, the Florida statute on nonprofits are very clear. It's inclusion, not exclusion. And my client, maybe we wouldn't be here today if my client was allowed to be part of that association, actually have a discussion with their board about why she should be able to do what she does, or did. Additionally, I don't have the proof here today to enter into evidence. But again, if we're gonna call a spade a spade, Ms. Letcher's property, who just came up here and talked, part of her property is inside the easement that we're talking about today. She actually has an existing structure that actually...
Do you have a survey to that?
No, sir.
Then we're not gonna allow it, okay?
Wait a second. They've set up here and, and claimed that I've lied because of my representation with regards to my client. And quite frankly, I'm a little bit offended
I don't remember anybody calling you a liar.
Not you, sir. Nobody up here.
If you don't, if you don't have a document, we're not gonna allow it, okay?
With the very least...
You need to state to the points, let's finalize this.
To the point is, my client is not building a rental house. My client does have a hardship. My client's asked for, and apparently, I guess, a variance, I guess I'm asking for a 7-foot variance, after all, instead of a, a 20-foot variance. Is, I would like to reduce my request, instead of 20 feet, to 7 feet, because ultimately, the statute section of the code that y'all were actually referring to, that the, the, the planning department has interpreted it with regards to 20 feet, we should be using, apparently, in part of grabbing the patent and the right-of-way issue, we should be using a 40-foot roadway protection zone, right-of-way protection zone, which would put us 40 feet from the center line. And so I'm here to ask today for a 7-foot variance instead of a 24.
I respectfully disagree with your interpretation. I also respectfully disagree with your interpretation of hardship. You can't have a hardship if you don't have a building structure to present this board to say we building this.
Sir, respectfully, I understand your point, that Mr. Velever here is an architect. Why would we go spend $20,000, $30,000 on architectural fees until we know what we can build? That's the whole point. That's the reason why I put...
I, I just, I do not agree with your interpretation of the 40-foot, and also disagree with your interpretation of hardship. So you have anything else you want to add?
No, sir. I just, just that the fact that my client tried to become a member of the association to discuss this with her neighbors. She was denied. And under Florida statutes, nonprofits, I think that's an issue.
Well, that's not our issue. That's not our concern.
I know it's not.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, can I clarify that just for a second? And I apologize for you needing to do that.
I'm gonna say something.
Are you gonna address an issue that is relevant to us, granted this, or are you gonna... No speculation about the homeowners, because I'm not interested.
Nothing. No speculation whatsoever. A point of clarification, only because it's now on the record here. His client was a member of our association and was asked to, and, and her dues were sent back to her, and she was thrown out of the association because she showed up at a Board of Commissioners meeting and represented herself as representing our association.
That is not relevant to our issue before.
Okay. I just, I just wanted you to understand. There is no feud here.
I cut Mr. Watson off. If it's not relevant, we're not gonna discuss it. Do you have something to say? Come out, state your name for the record.
Say something or not?
Yeah, you can come out. I see. Come out, state your name for the record.
Christopher Harold Watson.
Did you, were you not sworn in earlier?
I was not sworn in earlier.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth that you got?
I do.
Thank you.
The reason we're here tonight is because 5.04.06 could not be described to me in the same way twice, from basically anybody at planning. And we're not asking to go against the rules. Actually, we're asking for the rules to be applied to us correctly.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, Mr. Watson here, who happens to be on the day, is also Ms., Ms. Watson's contractor.
Okay.
And, and so he's been trying to figure out what can and can't be built, and how to build, and, and that's kind of culmination of this.
Okay.
There, there have been many meetings of me going into the, to the planning department, trying to find out what I could help this woman design, because she's wanting to design her own house, this and that. And I was instructed to go before the variance board, because I, they could not define this paragraph to me. Could not do it, and still can't do it, to be honest with you. I mean, it, it, if you follow it word by word, then there is no logical determination other than it's either less than the 40-feet, or it's more than the 40-feet. If you call it less than, then we're pulling 40-feet off of this, where it says, the property boundary, which happens to share the center line. When I sat there, and of course, the reason I, if you notice, the pre-application meeting was in December, was because I had the meeting, and with Mr. Catalano. And after the meeting, he basically said, well, you don't need a variance for this. I'd already paid, I was doing the pre-app, and, and so, okay, we don't need to go before the variance board. He read it the same way I did. Basically, you would pull the 40-feet from the center line, which happens, just happens to be the property line also. So, that's where, we left it. Then I came back the next week, and I was told, oh, no, that's not the way we're reading that now. We're saying you need to set back 20 off of the easement. The main thing is that either it's a 33, or it's a 66. If it's a 66, this doesn't apply. If it's a 33, it does apply. So, we're not asking to break any rules whatsoever. We're asking for 5.04.06 to be applied, as it, as it was written and clearly states where the measurement should start, which should be the property line. And that's pulling the 40-feet. It's a 20-foot right-of-way, and then it's a 20-foot setback. And that puts us 40-feet off of the property line, which just happens to be the center line of the easement. So I just, sorry, I just, I don't, we're not asking for any type of exception. I'm actually asking for someone just to follow the rules that were written, or at least tell me how they, how I'm wrong. the rules that were written, or at least tell me how they, how I'm wrong.
You read in five point oh four, point oh six, paragraph A, B, C, one, two, three. What's you reading?
That, yeah, that, yes, sir. Are you-
You read in, I mean, where do you get forty foot from the center line?
Okay. Determination of applicable setback.
Determinates the applicable setback.
Okay.
Okay.
It shall be measured from the greater limit of the right-of-way, right-of-way protection area, when existing easement or right-of-way is less than minimum specified, or the property line. The greater limit of is basically where we could not get anybody to give me a definition of that. The forty feet down below was, was initially used because this piece of property, I went in with a survey that only had half of the right-of-way easement marked on it. So it was thought to be thirty-three feet. At that point, when I said the greater limit of the right-of-way, that's where you're going to start the measurement of, then, what is the property line? Zero? Because thirty-three, I mean, the, whatever the measurement of any easement is going to be, is always going to be greater than zero. It's unique because the property line happens to also be the center line of the right-of-way. Also, when you measure it, it shall be measuring a straight line from the center line of any right-of-way. I mean, we're not trying to skate around anything, to be honest with you. I mean, it's, it's, it's actually following to the letter of the law. I realize if it had said easement instead of right-of-way, then we'd be in a different situation, but, but I guess the main reason I'm up here is that if we can't come to the decision tonight, I need to find out exactly how this is supposed to be read, because I don't see how it doesn't apply to this lot, and putting us basically at the seven, seven feet off of the thirty-three foot easement.
Hang on.
Ma'am, let me, let me explain something again.
Yes, sir.
That government patent says that is a right-of-way, thirty-three foot right-of-way. You cannot do anything, your lot line, even though it's a government lot, it goes out of the street. I agree with that. It's been like that since nineteen point seven. I, I, I got it. The patent overrides that thirty-three foot strip because it's given by the government, and it says, from the very first, from the days, from the very first, and it runs, it's perpetual, it runs with the plan. The right-of-way is where you've got to measure from. There is, and there's nothing else to say. It's a right-of-way. It's no different than being right out here on ninety-eight. There's a setback from that right-of-way back. It's-
Okay, so this, I mean, so what you're saying is, is if it's less than forty feet, which it is, thirty-three, then-
Forget the lot line. Forget what it says in it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Forget what it says about the, the property line. In this case, it's a right-of-way. When this thing is written, this five oh four, oh six, it's taking into account the general idea of you're going to have a county-maintained road with your lot line going up to the right-of-way. That's the intent of that. That's what that intent is. I mean, even though it says black and white, I agree.
You're saying a property line stops at the thirty-three feet?
No. In the, in a government subdivision, you have, you have a square, like, I mean, where's my drawing? Here's your go, here's your government lot, okay? Here's your lot. As you, where are you going? There it is. I drew it out. Here's your lot line as it goes. Y'all see that? Here's your lot. Here's the sixty-six foot right-of-way as it goes along that. Here's your property line per the government plan. The patent of that, of this two thirty-seven says there's thirty-three feet right there. This is the right-of-way right there. You can't build past that. Your, since it says right-of-way, your setbacks start right here. If this part, if this patent said easement, if it said easement-
Yes, sir.
-then you would have a zero setback right there. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's, I mean, it's black and white. There's nothing else-
May I ask a question? Ask a question? First, the first paragraph of this whole section purpose, if you read it, and it, it says that really this whole section is only applicable if you have less than the forty feet that's required below. I mean, up, up top, it says that when an easement or right-of-way exists that is less than the minimum width or area required by this article, which is forty feet in this local-
It's not a forty-foot right-of-way. It's a sixty-six foot right-of-way.
I understand, but that, I understand that. That's the point, is that whole paragraph says that you only apply this paragraph if it's smaller than that.
You can only use the lesser if it's smaller than that. You can only use the forty if it was less than forty. You can't use the forty because the right-of-way is actually greater than forty already.
But that would push us back to-
To the twenty-foot setback from the lot line.
To the twenty-foot setback from the lot line.
But then we have to push on.
No.
You can't do that. You can't go from the set, you can't go from the lot line that's in the road. It's impossible, because if you did that, you come, if you can't, let's just say you're going to come twenty feet, like you said. You already got twelve feet of pavement on one side, like that, then you're going to be inside the existing right-of-way.
I, I understand.
Can I ask one other, other question then? Section three, on the same thing that we're looking at, measurement of setback. The distance shall be measured in a straight line from the center line of the right-of-way. Same section, same thing we're talking about. It's number three below, measurement of setback. This is actually under a paragraph that says measurement of setback. The distance shall be measured in a straight line from the center line of any right-of-way to the foundation of any vertical structure on the edge of the right-of-way. The required width for each applicable street in the classified is provided below, forty feet, local, local road.
So if it's thirty-three-
Number three is very, and that's the reason why I handed out the case law today, because I'm here, the Florida Supreme Court looks at the third paragraph and says that holds, because it is very clear, very straight. There is no ambiguity in that paragraph. And if there is, it's actually going to be in our favor, the, the property owner, because of property rights in the Florida Supreme Court. But you, you can't deny that language in number three.
That means sixteen and a half feet into that thirty-three foot right-of-way would where, would be where you start pulling your setback.
Okay.
So then you pull twenty feet off of that, so then we're even close. We're like a three and a half feet. I mean-
But the point is, is I think that's, that's where you start maybe talking about-
Okay, I agree, I agree with that. You can pull, but what are you pulling? What, what, what are you looking for?
Twenty feet, twenty-foot setback.
You pull twenty-
Then it's coming from the right-of-way.
From the center of the-
No, from the center of the right-of-way. This perhaps is similar-
No, 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 no. You're, you're misinterpreting this.
Sir, how, how am I misinterpreting? It's black and white.
All right, this is a right-of-way protection. This is nothing, it has nothing to do with-
That's why I gave you three pages. Go to the first two pages, then it says actual setbacks are twenty feet from the edge of the lot.
It's one or the other, but it can't be both.
Yeah, I mean, the point is, is that it's ambiguous, and that's why we're here.
Oh, I agree. If somebody sees ambiguous-
And that's why they're rewriting. And that's why they're, I mean, really, I really feel an absolute worst case that you can interpret this would be the forty-foot protection zone from the center of the right-of-way, which would be actually seven feet out of our thirty-three feet. So you're really forty feet from the center line to, that is like the absolute worst way you can interpret it. I mean, I'm a worst case with regards to what we're trying to accomplish here today. So really, we should be being, sitting at a seven, that's the reason I'm saying, well, I need to change this to a seven-foot request for variance, because really, that's where our setback is, in our worst case. Otherwise, we're sitting in a right-of-way that we can't be in.
But you're getting that.
There's still a fundamental problem. There's no hardship, even if you follow the county's interpretation. Is there any chance- You have to challenge the county's interpretation.
Then, then, okay, then, it sounds like we need to go back to the county and work on the interpretation and see where we are.
That's a different, that's a different hearing. That's a different request. That's not the same.
Okay.
Can I, okay, um, all right.
We're here because I was instructed to come before the variance board, because I was not-
Well, let him, let him say what he's got to say. We need to hear it. Don't tell him.
Well, I, I, I was actually in the meeting, and at the end of the day, there, these sections are being rewritten. And unfortunately, the, I, I wouldn't have their job. I don't know how to do their job.
Right.
But the Planning Department is in the middle of all this, trying to make interpretations.
Right.
And we, I've said in two different meetings, where two different planners made two different interpretations.
I believe it.
And, and ultimately, oh, yeah, and ultimately, the, the, this, for lack of better expression, and I appreciate this fact, the safest, most conservative position was we're going to do twenty feet off of this easement, and quite frankly, go ask for variance, and there was a discussion about what you could point out for the variance, and that way we're not affecting the entire code, because we're actually rewriting it now. And so, the points I came in here and made are actually something that was discussed in our planning meeting because of the different things that could be brought up as hardship and otherwise. But the fact is, is when you don't have a director in place, and my meetings were a month or two ago, where you didn't have people in place, and you're, I think it's natural you take the most conservative rather than the most aggressive. And we're just wanting an answer, and then if there's a problem, we come in here and talk to y'all. I mean, so that's how we're here today. And so, and, I mean, so anyway, so I don't know whether to withdraw this. I don't know whether to go back to them and ask them to interpret. I understand y'all's point, but I also would argue-
You know, while we fix and do, close it.
Yes, sir.
And we fix and make a decision one way or the other.
All right.
Do you want to withdraw your request until you go back, or do you want us to make our decision?
Can I, I want to make one other statement on the record. First off, I want to apologize. I got a little bit upset earlier, and that was just not a place for it.
Hey, that's fine. We have no problem.
Another thing is, I made a comment with regards to Ms. Letcher and her property, and I don't know whether it's, whether, I want to make it clear on what my statement was, is that her property is not within the easement or right-of-way. Her, her property or encroaches are within the same twenty feet that we're discussing today. I understand that, but I just wanted to make, I, I'm not going to misrepresent anything, and I think I said something, the easement, or the right-of-way, and that's wrong.
We, we fix it. Do you want to withdraw your request and go back, or you want us to make a decision?
Yes, sir. I would like to withdraw my request and go back for clarification.
Okay.
And I appreciate the fact that y'all've been here for a couple hours to hear all of this.
Thank you.
Well, we ain't through. Just hang on.
Sure. Yes, sir.
We need a motion to withdraw?
Motion to accept.
Yeah, I think the motion would be to accept the withdrawal.
Right.
Motion?
You said move.
Ms. Letcher made the motion?
I'll say it.
Second. Scott, any discussion? Hold on, please. Right?
Aye.
If you come back before the board, I would highly recommend you have a building plan, because, you know, I really don't, I, I don't think that we can make a hardship determination without a structure. I mean, that's asking the board just a little bit too much.
Yes, sir, I understand. And also-
And I also would like to have a, a crystal-clear survey.
Okay. The word hardship should never come back up again. Defining this paragraph is all we will be focused on doing, because I think-
Well, I think we fix and help you with that. All right.
That's, that's quite all right. Thank you, Mr.-
I agree with it, and, and that's why we tried to put in the, the mail-out that went out to everybody, the intent, because it goes back to cost, and how do you design something that you don't even know that can fit on the lot line? So anyway, we weren't trying to be-
Twenty feet is a lot to design around, so, I mean, that's why we, we didn't, we don't have-
We appreciate it. We appreciate your, your discussion.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
There has to be, there has to be understanding in the Planning Department about the right-of-way. That, I mean, you know, there has to be when this applies and when this does not apply. I mean, this is pretty simple stuff. That is common sense stuff.
Mr. Johnson, it would be our position, talking to Chris, we get, given, we've given our interpretation, the staff gave an interpretation, and then agree with it, but we gave an interpretation. One of the problems, we have to make sure we, when we give an interpretation, that it can be replicated. In other words, this, this situation, when it's brought to us the next time, that same interpretation can be applied even. So, it's our position, we give an interpretation.
So it's, it's your position that the interpretation of the right-of-way, the, that this code, right, this does not apply, and that this is being corrected?
We have sixty-six feet there.
Pardon me?
We have sixty-six feet there, so we don't need that right-of-way protection zone at our length.
You're saying it doesn't apply because it's over forty feet?
Well, if, if, if we had thirty-eight, then-
Then it would apply.
That's our position.
Okay. Clarity. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Watson, you dismiss. You can go now.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move along. No, you're not getting one. Roland Dunes Barris. Say your name for the record.
Robert Baronti, senior planner for-
Say your last name.
B-A-R-O-N-T-I.
Yeah, but say it.
Baronti.
It'd take me a little while. Or what, is there someone here you're representing?
No, I'm staff.
I like to, I like to hear from the applicant before the staff, if you don't mind. Who's here for Roland Dunes?
This is all we got. Well, can I at least ask you to enter the staff report packet and the two letters of objection that are on your table?
No, sir. Yes, sir. Wait a minute. Mr. Dykes, this is going to be a staff report, Roland Dunes Barris, exhibit A, exhibit B. How many more exhibits are there? That would be two. The two letters, is that correct, Mr. Dykes? Who's JP Engineering?
Well, that would be, uh, one of, I'm one of those. My name is Tracy Jernigan with JP Engineering.
What's your name?
Tracy Jernigan.
Mrs. Jernigan, you've got five minutes.
All right. Well, our project that we're presenting for your consideration tonight is Roland Dunes. It is in a mixed-use, land use. Our client is proposing a retail and restaurant on the first floor, residential units on the second floor. And it's a, it is a unique property. It is on thirty A. Out of that eighteen and a half miles or so of thirty A, there are only nine properties that have this situation of having double scenic corridor frontage. So, the, the collector roads that come into scenic thirty A are included in those scenic corridors. So what we're requesting is a variance for the twenty percent reduction that all the other remaining properties on thirty A get to benefit from, that is, that is stated in the code. And I'd like to just read that section of the code, and this is under thirteen point oh two, point oh oh.
Before you start doing that, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
What's your square footage of your structure?
Square footage is, uh, I think I've gone blind up here. Ninety-eight hundred square feet?
Ninety-eight fifty-nine. Okay. How many parking spaces are you requiring?
Uh, we would typically be, we would be required fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
Yes, sir, and we're, we're asking for that, a reduction by ten.
And you're asking to reduce by ten?
Yes, sir.
Twenty percent, is that ten or eleven?
Uh, the twenty percent would be ten.
Okay. So you, you're going to have forty-three parking spaces?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
How many businesses you going to have in that building?
Uh, it's, it's not certain, but I would anticipate probably two.
Is it going to be one rental, two rentals? I mean, is it laid out? How's it laid out?
Uh, it would be, right now, it's proposed to be restaurant and retail, so two, one, one owner, I guess, two, two rentals, two leases.
What is your seating capacity on your, on the restaurant?
Uh, the, we have this square footage. I don't, I don't have the exact numbers on the seating capacity itself.
Okay.
And that, and that's the reason for that, that, that line is kind of fluctuating, you know, on the square footage of how much is being proposed for restaurant versus the retail, and we're still trying to nail that, nail that situation down.
I need to ask our attorney something.
Sure.
Mr. Dykes?
Yes, sir. My office is across the street from here. Yep. Um, possibly be impacted. I just want to be, you to be aware, my office is across the street. I wasn't, I didn't receive notice, so I didn't know that it was there. Again, it doesn't mean that notice wasn't issued. I'm not the owner of the property, so it wouldn't have been sent to me. But do you see any conflicts, any issues? Does anyone have any problem with that?
There should be no ethical conflicts. You should be allowed to participate. The fact, the only thing, you know, obviously, if you were a business partner of the owner that was asking for the request, that would be a situation, but from my understanding, you should, you'll be allowed to participate in.
I had no knowledge that it was even happening.
That, that's fine, and, and the fact that you lease property adjacent to this doesn't have any effect on your ability to serve.
Do you have any objection, him listening, hearing it?
I don't have any objection.
Okay.
And I would say probably the reason you didn't get the notification, we did send out the, the notices, because it's-
I'm not doing that.
Yeah.
Okay. I think you clarified the questions, so go ahead.
All right. Uh, this is under the scenic corridor section of the Land Development Code. It says, "Commercial uses are encouraged to provide parking in the rear of the building to allow building facades and landscaping to predominate the view-" to allow building facades and landscaping to predominate the view from the road. Parking requirements in section 5.02.02 shall be reduced 20% for all commercial developments that provide parking in the rear of the building. However, the parking area shall not encroach into the coastal protection zone," which that doesn't apply to us. So, that reduction, that encouragement, rather by the, by the land development code in the county to reduce parking for that scenic vista is, is what we're, we're actually requesting the variance for. In this situation, this corner lot, because we do have two scenic vistas, it, it's difficult to call the rear of the building, as that code says. When you have two fronts, we have two rears. And that's, that's the way we've depicted this parking lot. Parking from the County Road 83 would be to the rear of the building. But parking from the 30A would also be to the rear of the building. But you're going to have parking on the side of the building, one way or the other, just because it's a corner lot inherent to that, you know, just that geometry. That's the way that's, that's going to work. So, what, what we find ourselves is a, is a very unique situation, like I said, in that every other property adjacent to us, down that 18 miles, gets to, gets, gets that benefit of that 20% reduction. Now, the intent of that, what we, what we interpret, our opinion is, that intent is to protect that scenic vista, that scenic corridor of 30A. And, and in doing so, having plenty of landscaping, building facades, so you just don't see as much of the parking. And that's, that's what our, our design has incorporated. We're using the preservation area. There's, uh, the, the whole property is encumbered with an upland preservation, uh, community, actually, two separate ones. So, what we're doing is using that preservation area as the screening on the front. And, and one of the exhibits that we submitted has a color, a color depiction of that preservation area, the green, that would, um, that would show the, our proposed preservation. Everything else would be building facade. So, I feel like we're meeting that intent of that code with the predominant view being landscaping and building facade. We just don't have that ability, because we're on a corner lot, to take advantage of that. So, that's, that's the, uh, that's the kind of nuts and bolts of it.
How much vegetation do you have in the green?
Uh, roughly a quarter of an acre.
I mean, what's the width?
Uh, the strips that are on the front of the building are, uh, those are 10-foot wide. And if you've, if you've been down there, that, that vegetation is quite dense. And I think that would, that would, that would serve as a better screening than even replanting other landscape. And that, that vegetation is dense, so.
So, you protecting a 10-foot buffer? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes, sir. We, that, we're required to protect that upland preservation community, so we're putting that, that 10-foot buffer as a protected area. So, we're not going to impact that at all in those, in those areas that we're depicting. Now, the, there's some utility situations at the corner there, so we couldn't, uh, you know, keep that screening all the way down through the corner. We, we still had to have some access for some of the utilities there. But that's our, that's, that's our, our request, is just simply to be able to have the same advantage that every other property on 30A has, and take advantage of that parking reduction so that we can, we can have a, a development here that I, I kind of feel like the county's on our side if they're recommending, uh, or encouraging that type of.
With, with all of the, uh, traffic flow on 30A.
Yes, sir.
And 83, the businesses and the people's coming. You don't feel like it's necessary to put all the parking you can so you can get all the people? You know, you can't, you're limiting 10 parking spaces, and it's already limited.
Yes, sir. If we could have, if we could have some additional land, we'd certainly have some additional parking.
Well, now, uh, how large is your, what, what's the, what's parking size of, of your parking spaces? You're not talking about that much footage if you take a little bit out of the building, would you?
Uh, no, sir. We, we could take it out of the building. It, it might become a, an un, uh, just wouldn't be a viable project if we didn't have enough square footage to justify it.
Do you believe that's possible?
Well, there's a lot of things possible in South Walton, so.
But this concerns me, the, the parking. I don't think there's enough parking in those, in, in, in that area. And I think the traffic flow on 30A is definitely going to continue to be a, a, a major concern.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to see if there's any way that you could, you know, keep those parking spaces.
Yes, sir. And there are, I believe there are some, there are priorities. I think everyone has an opinion on what's the highest priority. Parking is certainly an issue in Walton County. And I, and I think that preservation is also an issue that some people place highly. In this paragraph, in this code, they're, they're putting a lot of priority in that scenic vista at the, uh, I wouldn't call it the detriment, but they're using the parking reduction to place that emphasis on that scenic vista of 30A. And, and like I said, as, as that language kind of is written, they're, they're encouraging that parking reduction. Now, you know, parking is still going to be an issue. Nobody's going to, nobody's going to argue that point.
Okay. Any questions?
You're also going to have six two-bedroom houses on top, or two-bedrooms condos on top of a retail restaurant space.
Yes, sir. That, that was the, uh, trying to have that compact development in that mixed use and be able to take advantage, take advantage of all of those uses in one site, which is what the mixed use was intended for. That, that was, that's why we're approaching it that way.
And this plan does show the reduced parking?
Yes, sir, it does. It doesn't matter how much water I drink during the day, I get the dry mouth when I stand before a board like this.
Any other questions?
Are, are any of those parking spaces going to be reserved for the residential spaces?
We would reserve one space for each of those residential units. And, and that came, um, I had a discussion with one of the property owners that we sent the certified mailouts to, called, and he, he brought that point up, about, uh, reserved parking for those units. So, I, I think it would be smart to reserve one space if there's two required for each of those units. So, one space would definitely be reserved, just so when that individual gets on from work, they, they can park, they can find a place to park.
Why are there two cut-throughs? I mean, if you had only one cut-through, you could actually argue that you are screening. But having two cut-throughs, one on 30A and one on 83, provides more visibility to that parking.
Well, it, it does. You're, you're absolutely right. The fire department don't generally like to go behind the building like that, just for circulation, for fire department life safety was one issue. I, I don't know if we could achieve that with one and still get the fire department approval, which at, at this point, we don't have any objections from the, from the fire district on this plan. We have, in the past, had one entry like that with, and, and it's been, been commented on by the fire district.
Any other questions?
Did they allow it? Uh, in, in some instances, they have, and, and some not. Some we've had to redesign so that there was at least a, a drive-out.
We will give you the opportunity to come back when we hear from the planning and from members of the public.
Good evening again. My name's Bob Baronti. Again, I'm a planner with the Planning and Development. Briefly go over the, the package. We met with the applicant, myself, and the planning manager, and told him this section that he's appealing the 20% reduction for does not call, forgive a percentage like the other corridor does. The 50% of the parking will be behind the rear. This has always been interpreted as 100% of the parking will be behind the rear of the building to get that reduction. And so, when we told the applicant that, the applicant said that they had, we, he was given choices. He was going to appeal this directly as a time-saving move or ask for a director's opinion. Then, if that opinion came negatively towards his position, he would appeal that decision. So, the other properties he was talking about, as far as we could tell, none of them have come in and asked for the variances for this 20%. They've all met, they've, they've identified one side of the property that's the front, and then directed the parking that way.
There's no allowance to use the buffer as parking?
Well, no, because he's going to have, a lot of his buffer is going to be the required preservation for the protected species of trees.
And there's, there's no, no way around that?
No, not that I can see it.
That's in the comprehensive plan. They, uh, it's actually scrub, um, which is one of the protected communities that's defined in our comprehensive plan, so we couldn't vary, um, that preservation requirement.
On a, on a, a standard residential use, they're going to have two, two condos, right?
I believe this is a mixed-use commercial lot.
They're going to have two, two residential living quarters. Is that correct?
We'd have to ask the applicant what, what he's plant, what the building is. Six, he says, six.
Six? What's the standard parking for those residential? Just if, if it was in a commercial, what's the standard?
But it's by, it's by bedroom. And, and just to be clear, he is asking for a variance from the parking standards. I think the way this is worded here is a little bit confusing, because we're referencing section 13.02. I mean, this section has been determined by staff not to be applicable to this project. So, he's asking for a 20% reduction to the actual parking standards, which are defined in section 5.02.02. I'll tell you what they are.
Yeah, please, Steve. And I still need a book. I misplaced my, my.
You need a code.
No, I need a code.
We'll get you one.
I want to have an updated one myself.
Okay.
You know, PDF on iPad.
I'll be sure you get printed two-sided, not like mine, so it's not heavyweight.
You're going to have six two-bedroom residential use?
Yes, sir.
So, it's, uh, two-bedroom, two spaces per dwelling unit for two fam, two bedrooms.
Two spaces for two bedrooms?
Correct.
So, that's 12.
But then he also has the commercial component on the bottom, which also generates parking.
What's required for that?
And that is, what is he doing down there?
Well, he's, he, it, he's proposed a restaurant use and retail use, but we haven't really gotten to find, because this is kind of stalled at the technical review level until we determine this.
And you don't go by square footage?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
One space per 150 square feet for restaurant.
But you don't know how much is going to be restaurant. Commercial square footage, you don't have a parking space for a commercial square footage. It depends on the use. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Whether it's a restaurant or commercial or retail.
Or an office, office building or a bank.
He has a site plan. I think the applicant's estimated the allocation of, of space.
Seven, 7,500 square feet, commercial. How much parking?
Retail. Shopping center?
Yeah.
What, five spaces per 1,000 square foot?
How many?
Five spaces per 1,000 square foot.
Or if it was a personal service, it would be one space per 350 square feet of gross floor area. So, it would differ a little bit by the actual.
Well, how do you know how many you need if you don't know what these businesses are or what?
They, they, I'm going to let the applicant respond, because they have a site plan. We had a DO in-house on this, so, or an application, so they've got it allocated.
If you got 7,500 square feet, that would be roughly 35, 36 spaces right there. Is that correct? And then if you put the 12 on top of that, then you're looking at 48. He said that he was figuring 53, but he wants a 10% reduction. So, that'd be, pardon me?
20%.
20%, which would be, uh, it'd be 43, right?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I clarify the delineation?
Yes, sir, please.
We do, we do have that on the site plan in the site data table that should have, I guess you have in your package. We, we do have the retail designated at this stage of the game at 5,400 square feet. And at five per 1,000, as the code, is 27 spaces. We also have the restaurant at this stage designated at 2,100 square feet, which, per the code, is one per 150, which equates to 14 spaces. The two spaces per residential is 12 spaces, and that gives us the total of 53. So, we, we do have those, uh, those values at, at this stage. Kind of, this is what we're applying for. So, we do have those nailed down. And it does meet that, uh, it does meet that parking requirement based on that, that reduction. If that helps.
You're just confused me. You're starting at 53, and you're asking for a 20% reduction?
Yes.
Gives you how many?
Gives us 43. 20% of our, of that required spaces is 10 spaces. That would be our 20% that we're asking for.
Basically, you use the language in the, you, you, you use the language in the code that they represent does not apply to this. Do you agree with that? Mr. Bart? Is that his name?
Baranti.
Baranti?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I figured I'd throw something out there.
Hey, you.
Yes, sir.
We didn't need anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 sir.
Baranti. It's Baranti.
Come here. I was just messing with you.
That's fine.
I forgot my question. What was the question? You said they did not agree with the code that they're using to ask by. Is that, is that not, not the, uh, the testimony that you gave?
Correct.
Why?
The interpretation was, and has been, that on these corner lots, the parking will be in the rear of the build, the designated rear of the building. With, there was a development that's actually being built now that they changed their site plan to put the parking all into the rear, because that, there is no, there's no trigger percentage of the total parking that's in the rear to generate this reduction. In this corridor, it's 100%. So, there would be no trigger of, well, I got 75% behind what we're calling the rear, and 25 on the thing. It's 100% of it has to be behind the building, to the rear of the building.
Yeah. Actually, let's go ahead and define a front on this one, because, uh, what would be the front? Now, they have two sides. The front would be the shortest.
I believe they asked, did you not ask that, that 30A be your front?
Which is the shortest? I believe it's 100.
Yes.
So, it would be by, by code, that would be defined as the front. And so, the parking would have to be north of the building.
Correct.
And they really don't get a choice unless they ask the, the planning department to give them a director's, uh, discretion ruling that they could use the other one as their front.
Correct.
But in this case, it really wouldn't apply, because it's pretty obvious that the other one's longer, and it's a minor road.
Correct.
Relatively speaking.
However, it is covered in that corridor, so that's why this issue comes into play.
But really, we would have to see, even though it would have to at least be north of 30A, at least.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other questions?
My, my. Charlie, Charlie, go ahead.
The, I forgot what, hold on. What is the purpose of allowing a 20% reduction in the rear?
Well, it's to encourage so the parking is less visible, so it protects the corridor, and it, it, the, the parking is less visible. So, you have the landscaping or the building itself taking up that area.
So, that's why we're having parking problems all over the place.
Not the city side, it's all part of the road.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Say your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Matthew Parker with JP Engineering. I'm the professional engineer, project engineer. I'd like to point out that the code does not say 100% of the parking shall be in the rear. It says the parking shall be to the rear of the building, which is exactly what we have. This property basically has, as the, the way the road frontage is, rear, to the rear of the building. And the reason that we're asking for the, the variance is to meet the code language. And the reason that we're asking for the, the variance is to meet the code language promoting the vista views. I'd also like to point out that on the highway eighty-three frontage, the setback there is greater than what we could be taking advantage of. So, what, in essence, we've done is exactly what the code wants us to do, what the vision of the, of the scenic corridor, the purpose of it, we're accomplishing that, in our opinion, um, with our design. We're protecting two different view corridors, and I feel like we're doing it really well. But we, um, must be able to apply the twenty percent reduction as is afforded all of the other properties. The amount of protection and vegetation and the care that we've taken to protect this intersection and to bring a sense of place to this corner, which is a very important element, both in the comprehensive plan and the land development code, creating this sense of place means that we protect that corner. So, what we've had to do is put all of our parking, and what we've chosen to do is put all of our parking in the rear in order to accomplish that goal, which is the whole purpose of the twenty percent reduction. Now, when we talk about, um, parking problems, um, and issues, I think oftentimes, a lot of those parking problems are not necessarily due to the businesses, but other people coming and parking up and down the road and going to beach access areas. I don't think it's the responsibility of the property owner to fix regional and global parking problems. His, his, um, um, responsibility is to provide enough parking for his facility, which we feel that it is. The amount of pedestrian and bicycle, um, traffic on this, they're really counting on a lot of people walking to this facility, creating a walkability, we've provided sidewalks, um, all around the building in anticipation of that. And so, I think that when you take a look at the design and applying the twenty percent reduction, that it absolutely applies to this, this property, but we need that reduction in order to meet the, the goals and objectives, objectives of the land development code.
I have a real quick question, didn't you say, Tracy, that you would only assign one parking space for each residence? And is that allowable?
No, so we've provided two spaces, uh, we, I said that we would mark reserved for one space, just so that.
Just one?
Yeah.
For each unit?
Right.
I've got one more question, Tracy, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I can't read, what is, uh, what is the set, what have you got down there, proposed setback off of eighty-three?
Off of eighty-three, we are at twenty-five point one.
And off of thirty in?
Twenty-five point one. So, we're ba, we're basically using two frontages with front setbacks on both of those corridors.
I'd like to make it known that this is a government lot, and this is off the right-of-way.
Appreciate that clarification, Mr. Rethan.
Anybody else? Do you have anything else to add?
Not at this point, we, we'll be able to come back, uh, after discussion.
Yeah, we, we heard from staff?
Yes, sir.
We, we, let's ask, hang on a minute, anybody from the public want to speak? You'll get the right to come in.
David Mylum, uh, here on behalf of Redfish Village condominium, um, the, the condominium, Redfish is, uh, across eighty-three to the east of, of the property in question. And we've kind of gone back and forth a little bit about what, what the variance is being requested, I kind of look at this, there's, there's a set of parking restrictions that are set forth in the code that say how many parking spaces we're supposed to have, and I think we all agree, it's supposed to be fifty-three according to, uh, the parking requirements. It, it appears as though at some point, there was a determination made that there was gonna be kind of a built-in variance into the code that says if you put all your parking on the, the, the rear of the building, then, then you're gonna get a twenty percent reduction. As I understand it, uh, the, the planning department has made the determination that that means if you can't have your parking on the rear of the building, then you're not gonna get that, that reduced allocation. So, a, and I think that our overarching concern as far, as far as Redfish is concerned, is the parking and, and is taking away parking. I, I've heard and agreed and disagreed with a lot of arguments about what we do about parking in Walton County, but, but reducing parking requirements in the code or varying from the parking requirements in the code as it stands today is not one of them. Um, we're going to, I, I noticed in the, in the plan, they, they are taking advantage of the, the compact car, um, allowance, uh, so they do have compact cars in here, uh, I know some people still drive compact cars, um, but I don't see them a lot. And so, it, it really concerns me that we're going to have a twenty-one hundred square foot restaurant, uh, fifty-one hundred square foot of retail, and then you're gonna have six residential units, two bedrooms on top of that. And so, i- in, as far as Redfish is concerned, they're gonna need every bit of those fifty-three spaces. When you, when you factor in not only the people that are gonna come to the restaurant, the people that are gonna come to the, to the, uh, retail, but you're gonna have the employees that are gonna be needing to park as well. And, and I happen to represent a lot of, of HOAs and condos and mixed-use developments on thirty A, and parking's a problem everywhere, there's nowhere that has enough parking. Um, and, and, and that's, that, that may be historic, but the fact of the matter is, Redfish is concerned that if there's not enough parking in this new development, that that parking is gonna bleed over into, into their subdivision and into their, their community. Um, I, I think the comment that was made is absolutely right, and that is there, there is a parking problem in Walton County. And there are people that come and they park in the, um, in, in the right-of-way, they park on the streets, they park in other businesses, they park in the residences, um, but that, and, and that's absolutely valid, but if we don't, if the businesses and the residents don't have enough parking, then it's just gonna compound the issue. So, that's our primary concern, I think that, that goes to the first factor that needs to be proven is with regards to, um, concerns about the, how it's going to impact its injuries to the neighborhood. I, I do have a concern about the factors, I think the hardship question is certainly a factor here. Again, six residential units, five thousand square feet of retail, twenty-one hundred square foot restaurant. I, I, I fail to see the, the hardship that's associated with that relative to what they, what they would have to take out of their building in order to comply with the fifty-three, um, would still allow them, I think, in, in my mind, to, to build a reasonable structure. Um, and I think that the unique nature as well, um, you know, that, that's not necessarily defined in the code, but the application itself indicates that there are nine other properties on, on thirty A that have the same issue. So, this is not something that's unique to this property, um, there are other properties out there, and it just so happens that the way this property is situated and the way it's been, the, the way it's proposed, they can't get all the parking on the rear of the building. So, um, our, that's our dispute, and that's why we ask that you deny the variance.
Appreciate you coming, anybody has any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hang on before you come back up, just hang on, anyone else has anything to say? Staff has anything else to add, whatever, final, you get the final show.
Yes, sir, and if I might, if I could reserve, um, Tracy Jernigan as well to rebut, um, we work together, J P.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Um, the compact car issue, the reason that we did the compact cars on a portion of the property, and I can show it to you on the site plan, right here, was to preserve additional landscape that is not required. Uh, we can modify that and get rid of the compact car, uh, space, and so, to address one of the issues that he brought up, we can, we can solve that problem, uh, we don't have to have compact car, uh, spacing in, in this property.
How, how's that gone to increase, you lose, uh, you're gonna lose some parking spaces?
No, sir.
Would you not?
No, sir, we can fit, uh, regular-sized parking spaces, um, in that area and, and keep the number of spaces, the total number of spaces.
How many, how many regular parking spaces? I mean, that compact car, that's mean like there's about two to one.
There's nine, uh, nine compact car spaces.
And you're gonna get nine regular spaces?
Yes, sir, in, in the parking facility, yes. And, um, we would argue that a hundred percent of the parking is in the rear of the building, as written in the code.
Mr. Chan?
Yes? And I don't know who, for the applicant, uh, it, can one of you, just so the record's clear, there's specific requirements that you must find to grant a variance, some of those are hardships like we talked before. What hardships are you claiming before the board? Or unique circumstances that are special to this property that you, you believe that a variance is, is appropriate?
The allowable, uh, twenty percent reduction in parking, um, is not being applied here.
Thank you, thank you.
You have anything to add?
Uh, just, just briefly, I, I agree, like I said, I, I know parking is, is a concern, but so is preservation, so is the scenic corridor. Which one weighs more?
Well, let's talk about economics.
Yes, sir.
You know, you wanna take and throw everything, everybody in South Walton wants, what about greed? I mean, would you reduce your property, building, you, you're building, you're not gonna decrease your income. Your income is gonna stay the same. I mean, how can you not say it'd be worth reducing that building to keep the parking? And be, and then you take care of the preservation, you take care of the parking, and everybody's happy.
Yes, sir.
I mean, how much, how much, I mean, do you have a financial, do you have a financial, financial expectation on the space? And do you have a financial expectation on less of a space?
I, I think there's some financial value in, in any of that space, I, I, I don't dispute that, but I'm certainly not agreeing.
How much are you gonna lose, I don't think you're gonna lose that much. I mean, we have to look at it, you know?
Yes, sir.
And, and there's part of this code that I strongly agree with, and there's part of code I strongly disagree with, but I think it's the board's interpretation to take and what is best for the whole area there.
And that, that's why we're here, I mean, we're, we're here to present this and get, get your determination, that.
Okay.
The cut and dry of it is that, sir.
But there is a lot of economics in this also, and, and I don't know if, if you would lose that much, if you, if you gave up a little bit. That's, and, and you don't have those figures or those numbers.
No, sir, and we weren't prepared to have that kind of, uh, discussion, but, you know, there, there, I believe there would be some economic impact in reducing the building size because you're, you're reducing, uh, potentially those residential units, those sizes on the, on the second floor, so I, I think there is some impact there.
What size are those units, Tracy? Square foot?
Square footage?
I wanna think that, and this is, this is an estimate, um, I would say probably fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred square feet?
Not huge.
So, not very big?
No.
Any other questions?
So, it may impact, you know, by reducing that, it may impact the fact that we, we can't really put two bedrooms, we'd have to reduce them to one bedroom if it's, if it's still a viable, you know, project at that point.
Just like to point out one more thing, it's not all about money, it's truly about creating a sense of place on this corner. Something, um, we could also take this building, put it back at the back, and have a wraparound parking in the front, so that when you drive around that corner, you look at a sea of cars. I just don't think that's the intent, that's the purpose of the twenty percent reduction, that's the, the, the purpose of that. The reason it's in the land development code, this is a, a depiction, an architectural gridiron of what we're talking about. Now, if you don't agree that all of the parking is in the rear of the building, and the intent is to get fifty-three parking spaces on this, and we move this building to the back and have a sea of parking on the corner, I just don't think that that's the intent of the land development code, the intent of the, of the comprehensive plan, nor the reason that the twenty percent reduction allowance is there. It's there to accommodate exactly what was done. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Close up the discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Got it, Karen, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Motion?
A motion to deny.
Motion to deny, second.
Second to.
Discussion, we got a motion to deny, we got a second discussion.
I think they've made a persuasive argument, you're either gonna reduce the number, or you're gonna move all, move the building back and put all the parking where, where it's visible. I mean, I, I thought that was persuasive.
Are you wanting the parking in the back, or you, or you, you willing to give up ten parking spaces to have the parking in the front?
Well, I think that was the intent of that twenty percent allowance.
Well, let's talk about intent, but what do you think would be best for the businesses and the people that goes to South Walton? Would you want a building and build on the front, with parking in the back, as ten less, and have it on the front and have it ten more? I mean, you know, when you have all these people there that comes down and they build this here, I mean, you know, I understand the intent of the code, you know, I don't agree with a lot of the code. But at the end of the day, when you give ten spaces here and ten spaces there, and, I mean, I mean, put yourself in that position. You know, if you're going down there and look for a place that you, you, you know, you're not gonna go, well, the people, you can put, reserve all you want to. How you gonna police it? And if I'm going in there to, you know, with my truck, I'm gonna have to get two of them, because you can't get in one of them anyway. And you can't turn around in a little rascal anyway. And there are a lot of SUVs there, so, I mean, do you wanna give up ten spaces for it to look better, or do you wanna think about the safety?
I think you could put sixty parking spaces there, and you're not gonna alleviate the problems we have down there.
But it'll help that facility.
I don't think that forty-three is enough, um, but I do believe he is staying with the intent of the, of the reduction. I mean, like his, they, they put the reduction in there for a reason, uh, they said if you'll, if you'll build your building out here in the front, make it look real nice, and we'd rather see the cars in the back, and I think he's, he's in that, in the spirit of that. And I think he's, he's meeting that, you can argue that it is a hardship to bring it forward and then oppose a double standard. When he put his setback for the twenty-five feet, the twenty-five feet, and he was imposing two fronts on his building, which would impose two backs on his building, which would mean he was putting his parking to the rear of the building. But on the same note, he, I would argue that he needed more than forty-three spaces. Reducing the size of the building reduces the number of parking spots that you need. He could make, you know, four two-bedroom houses instead of six, um, and reduce, you know, four spaces there. I mean, like, and when you reduce a little bit more square footage out of the building, you can reduce it, and you still kept everything the same.
If, if you're creating value by creating a better product by addressing the street, then you're creating a better product that has greater value, regardless of, you know, how many square feet you have. Um, and if you believe in that, you're gonna do that no matter what. I don't like to respond to things in terms of what it might be, uh, whether it be a threat or, or just logistically better. I don't think it's logistically better to put the parking in the front because you can't put two driveways that close to the corners of eighty-three and three, and thirty A. I don't really actually even think that it makes sense to have two cut-throughs. The fundamental problem I'm having is that they have, actually have a, a double non-compliance. They can't get the twenty percent because they can't front on eighty-three, they can't get the twenty percent reduction because they can't have parking front on thirty A. Either one of those is a disqualifier for the twenty percent reduction. If they were arguing that I've complied along thirty A, can we get the reduction, you know, you know, having a cutout on eighty-three, then maybe we can be talking about a hardship and, and, and whatnot, but right now I have two driveways that don't conceal anything. I mean, you're, you're still looking at a parking lot. It might have some semblance of a buffer, but it's, it's still, you're still looking at a parking lot from thirty A and from eighty-three. So, it's, it's not giving me even something to argue relative to either one to grant a variance. If you're saying, hey, we're complying on thirty A, that's our front, we're gonna call this on the back. We've got a request for a variance because we've got a hardship, because we've got both, maybe we can talk about that. But to me, it's not complying on either front.
I agree.
I agree.
Phil, John, Phil? You have anything to add, John?
No.
Scott? We thought we forgot you, but we did.
Well, my view is, this project's no different than any other project down on thirty A, there's the exact same. May I, could you put that, that elevation sheet you just had up there? They rendition there, it might not be exactly like that, but if you look at that beach vernacular as it's shown like that, that looks the same thing along thirty A in the business district all the way down. I could name five places that has the exact same thing. Right, well, I don't know the name of the two damn trees down there. But then whether they got variances or something, I, I don't know. But I know their, their criteria is basically the exact same thing. One good thing about this is where I do agree with having this corner having coming out is a safety issue about the fire. Because if you did, let's just, and I'm just being dead as I can. Let's say they didn't have the one on thirty A, but they had one on eighty-three right here and there was a major deal. They could have, they could have three or four trucks coming in and you'd have to have over here on this side, but if you look, they'd have to pull all the way in if that's where all the parking is at, right there, that'd be, that'd be a cluster. Just, just to put a fire. I mean, I'm just saying that. But my view of, if you look at this and it's no diff, and I think they're doing a good job trying to get the twenty percent just to make it, make it look decent. As far as the, the foot traffic and, and all the other, uh, not foot traffic, but the cars and all that, in the summertime, I don't care where you're at, there's going to be cars on that right of way. Going up and down. It doesn't matter whether they got sixty or a hundred, it ain't going to matter. It's, they're still going to park there. And also on this particular thing, especially in this area from, from here to three ninety-three, that's nothing but bicycle and foot traffic going in that building. And it's, and it's the same way all the way down. I mean, this, to me, this is no different than anything else that's out there being built right now. It's not, not a difference. I don't know what's that?
Mr. Chairman, before you, uh, the board decides, I just want to remind you, you do have criteria. You also have to look, they're asking for a twenty percent reduction. The variance, uh, criteria says that you have to look at the minimum, you know? So, even if somebody comes and asks for a twenty, if you determine based on the facts that a ten would, would be sufficient and you can give them a ten, you don't have to give them, you know, ten feet as a setback versus a twenty-foot setback. So, even though they're suggesting that the code gives them the option of a twenty percent, you know, if, I just wanted to remind you of that, uh, the hardship requirement and things like that. So, uh, I want to make sure that the board's looking at the criteria when they're making the determination because regardless of the order, we're going to need to put that, those findings of fact in the order.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We have a motion to deny the variance. We have a second to that deny. Mr. Dixon, how do you vote? Aye to deny, nay to not deny. How do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Mr. Fisher?
Nay.
Charlie?
Doesn't matter, Charlie.
Still need to vote?
Nay.
Your request has been denied. You have thirty days from the time that we sign the final order to file an appeal with the circuit court.
Thank you.
Okay? I believe that's the last item on the agenda. The minutes, has everyone had our team look at the minutes?
We don't have any.
No. Don't cry. I thought I saw them. Are they in the front of it?
I think, yeah, it should be at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Mr. Dykes, did you rate them? Did you see any problems with them?
Uh, I did review them and I did not see any, uh, issues with the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
You get all that, Karen? Bill did.
John.
John's ready to go on.
He's got a long drive.
Appreciate it. I never had a good meeting.
I look sick, I'm blaming you.
Mr. Dykes?
Yeah, what they're, what they're saying they're going to start doing is the staff just going to say they introduce all the staff before and all the backup. I know, I know what Mark's talking about and you, you see a lot of other, uh, like in code, they usually do that. They've got pictures and everything else.
What y'all think about?